I gotta turn my room down.
I'll call to order the Tuesday, March 28th, 2023 Town Council Committee of the Whole
Recording in progress.
Order at 6:32. Councillors are present with the exception of Councillor Parker, so we have a quorum. Calendar and Communications, Councillor Casiri.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I participated in the Mystic Irish Parade along with many other councillors. I received various emails regarding an HR position, the Ark Eastern Connecticut seeking temporary space, updates from the DOT employee regarding our last meeting, TVCCA building plans, Planning Department inquiry, communications regarding the Public Safety Committee potentially meeting on April 25th at 5:30, Branford Manor, Ledge Light Health District status reports, Groton Housing Authority monthly report, several emails about the bike pathway, the original surplus property policy, the updated budget calendar, including the new public hearing date of April 5th, congratulations to Thrive 55 for receiving the 2023 Wellspring Award, and Shenacostet golf rates. Thank you.
Councillor Franco?
Thank you. I think Councillor Casiri covered just about everything, and as well as I had some other communications with residents and some RTM members. That's all for tonight. Thanks.
Councillor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Also, congratulations to our Groton's Thrive 55 Active Living Centre on their 2023 Wellspring Award. We are blessed having a great senior centre and active 35, active over 55 centre here in the town of Groton. I also attended over this weekend the Connecticut Land Conservation Conference up at Wesleyan University. It was really, it was enjoyable, attended four different sessions up there, learning about land trusts, knotweed, how to get rid of knotweed, and a lot of other different things. It was about 500 people attending that conference, so it was really good. And then, last week, attended the Trails Meeting, which is like every, I guess every quarterly meeting that we have. And the two things that came out of that meeting, one was that Groton is going to be the beta test site for the Soundscape app, which is an app that works with visually impaired and blind people, would be working with it at the COP property, and, which is kind of a neat thing to do and to see how that evolves. And also, they talked about a CIP that's coming, which will be coming up in the upcoming budget, which is a stone dust path around the perimeter of the Thrive 55 property. So we'll have more walking areas for seniors, and they can do outside activity as well as inside. So, that's it.
Thank you. Councillor McBride?
Thank you. No additional comments or updates. Prior councillors pretty much were living outside.
Councillor Bordalung?
Thank you. I'm just trying to check from the last meeting, because we didn't have a meeting last week. So that was... I'm just making sure I have all my notes right, sorry. Can you skip over me and come back if you don't mind?
Councillor Westphal?
Thank you.
Sure. Thank you very much. I have no comments for tonight.
Thank you. Councillor Jacom?
Yes. I also attended the Mystic Irish State Parade with a couple councillors, had a great time. Did receive some emails about, from P&amp;Z for CIP referral memo, TVCCA facility, and finance quarterly reports, as well as an incident that happened in Noank and in support of CIP there. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. As it was stated, I too attended the St. Patrick's Day Parade, also attended Sunday, the award ceremony for the St. Patrick's Day Parade, so congratulations to all of those winners. It was a great turnout and the awards for different varying things for, you know, best band and things like that were awarded. Let's see. On the 17th of March, I attended Northeast Academy where they had a celebration of the arts, where Fitch Band Orchestra and Chamber Choir Jazz Band played. That was really nice to attend. I also attended a fundraiser. Also, congratulations to the Fitch High School Cheerleaders, who took second in states and then, I'm sorry, was first in states, I apologize, and then took second in New England's just over the past weekend. And they had a fundraiser prior to going off to New England's at the high school, where they had basket raffles, they did a, they performed their performance that they won at states, as well as door prizes and raffles, so it was pretty heavily attended to help them to go to New England's where they finished second. So that was very exciting. I also attended, at Stonington High School, every year they do a theme for, they have their art class, as well as local artists paint and do pottery, and they call it the empty bowls. And basically, it's to help with ending food insecurity in the community. And they award, and they decide where the funding and the money is raised. Basically, about, I don't name them all, about 15 to 20 different restaurants donated soup from around our community, from Westerly to, on the Groton Mystic side as well, some of the stores. And basically, you come in, you pay a flat rate, you can buy a pottery bowl and have your soup in the bowl. And it's just a brilliant way to support our community. And they were supporting Craig Floyd, the Givengarding, at Coogan Farm in Pawtucket Neighborhood, and the Neighborhood Food Pantry. So, what a great event to attend, and it was heavily attended, and definitely an honor to be there and support, you know, ending hunger, helping to end hunger. I also attended on March 25th in Waterford at the Nianic Brew Pub, the public brew there. They celebrated Staff Sergeant Ari Cothers, a birthday memorial who was killed over in Afghanistan several years ago. And they did a fundraiser, raffles, and it was to support the homeless hospitality, and kind of earmarked towards helping homeless vets. So, a wonderful way to support our community. I think that is all of my communications. I also did attend a Board of Ed meeting last night. I also was there prior to the Board of Ed meeting, where they, you know, I want to say congratulations to Dr. Mitchell, who was my superintendent when I was in the Groton Public Schools. I can still hear his voice on the robo-calls for no snow, no school on snow days. And he was a role model to our community, as being an African-American male in our community who served and worked his way up over 38 years of service, from being a teacher in the Groton Public Schools up to being a superintendent. He definitely, you know, as a person, a woman of color in our community, he was one of the forerunners for me, one and only person to look up to besides Ivy Williams. So, it was a great honor that they did a dedication to the Fitch High School library, and, you know, to commemorate him. So, congratulations to Dr. Mitchell. And that, I think, is it. I did receive communications, as it was stated, also Lauren Gothier, asking questions regarding the Clodchester property, as well as folks that had contacted me, some emails and even some phone calls regarding the golf course, as well as concerns with some of the bike path presentation that was presented, and many other concerns from, throughout the community that were sent out. It also was stated to me that, you know, I did, for full disclosure, submit my name to be on the vacated seat by Councillor Baumgartner, who vacated the property, the personnel appointments committee. I did send an email, I have not yet to hear back, but I did hear that they selected Eddie Jacom. For full disclosure, I am on no standing committee. As a returning person to the council, I'm not on any. So I found that to be a little frustrating, but I will swallow my pride. Not sure why I'm being overlooked. Thank you.
Thank you. I guess I got up to what a lot of the other councillors did. I had the privilege of walking in the Mystic Irish Parade, that was very fun. We had good weather, we had a great turnout from the council and other elected officials. And again, congratulations to the Thrive 55 for their, you know, Wellspring Award, that's well deserved, and they keep getting these, you know, national recognitions, and I think there's a good reason. But with that, we will move on to the approval of minutes. I make a motion to approve the March 14th, 2023 meeting minutes, so moved. Second. Moved by Melendez, seconded by Jones. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Kersy Nanip, sleep eight in favor. Onto new business, approval of 2023 golf court, golf course rates. That should be on page, page 11 of your packets. Welcome.
Good evening. Mark Berry, Director of Parks and Recreation, to my right Eric Morrison, Superintendent of Golf Course. We are here this evening to present the proposed 2023 golf course rates. This process began back in December, when we met with the Golf Advisory Board. They, we had a discussion about the rates. We met again the following month to finalize the rates. We then went and had a joint meeting with the Parks and Recreation Commission to discuss the rates, and the motion that was passed was for a 5% increase to the greens fee rates for, for this year. We are also looking to simplify the diversity of rates that we have. If you look at the rates that all the Shenacostet has compared to some of the other golf courses, we have, probably have twice as many rates. So, we're looking to try to simplify that. We're also, we did actually add a couple of new fees, but we ended up reducing or taking out more. We, the increase in fees is driven by a number of different factors. Our lease rates are going up. Every four or five years, we get new carts. We're at that point right now where we're cycling through the old carts and are going to be replacing with new carts. The new lease fee is, I think, about $8,000 more. We also have additional costs related to personnel and materials and supplies, just like all of us are paying more for everything. Same thing is happening at the golf course. We also look at, during these meetings, we also look at the rules and regulations, and the only rule, the only change to the rules and regulations was the addition of the Juneteenth holiday, which we've added to the rules and regulations. So, open to, we're open to answer any questions that the council may have.
Councillor Bordalung?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation or background. My first question is, did you poll any of the golfers and ask them about the current rates besides the committee?
We do a study every two years, we're a golfer satisfaction survey. We don't identify specific rates, but one of the questions we ask is why they like to play at Shenacostet. And one of the top reasons is the value of play that they get for the money that they pay. So, we don't survey every single golfer that comes in and says, "Well, would you like to pay this, or would you like to pay that?" We work through the course fees with the Golf Advisory Board, who are members themselves, and, you know, they represent a considerable amount of players on the golf course.
I know I'd asked about the military rate, which I see, you know, that's
Yes.
on here, so that's definitely a nice addition to see in writing here. What about low-income folks? One of the things that, since we're not a private, we're not a private, we're public, and so just like we offer fees for lower income at Parks and Rec for other events, is there any incentive to bring in more diversity and a diversity of incomes? Because that's what the push is, right? We, there was funding that you guys had asked for to try to, you know, make, get a van and go out to the community and bring people in for sports activities and bring it to their level. What are we doing to do that with, how are we doing that with golf? Which has been very excluded to an elite group of folks for many years. What are we doing to open up those doors?
We do offer, we have added some new rates. We did this a few years ago, the Associate and the Associate Plus. We particularly targeted the golfers that, once they kind of, once they move out of the youth category, previously, they would jump right to the adult rate. We introduced the Associate and the Associate Plus, and that has, prior to doing that, we had seven golfers between the ages of 22 and 35. We now have over 50 golfers since we've introduced that. So, we are targeting younger players to try to get them, because they're the future of golf. So, we are targeting that, that group of players.
What about people on fixed incomes or low income? That's what I was asking towards. So like, if you have children who need camp, and you, you're a single mom, and you fall on a low-income status, there's, there's funding that we have helped
Right.
for programs.
Right.
Have you done anything to
And that's available, and that's available through our, the Recreation Division when they sign up. We do have
So, is there any golf rates for people to qualify for?
No, we don't currently have, you know, if you're 50% below the, you know, a certain demographic level, or a certain level, we don't have rates specific to that.
Yeah. Is that something that we could look into?
Sure.
Because I think it's really important, it's not a private, we're, you know, this is not, this is a public, and it's part of our Parks and Rec, and it's really important that we, we should make sure that all folks have access to play. And I don't think it's something they have to disclose to the golf members down there, but they should be able to go through the rec place and, you know, disclose their income and qualify for a rate that is comparable to get involved as a family or as a youth. Also, I'm seeing a move for helping, you know, encouraging more women to play. Are we doing anything like that to incentivize that?
Yeah, absolutely. We've seen a, I think, a 12% increase in the number of women that are part of the women's club. Last year, we promoted, June is National Women's Golf Month, and we ran a special, I think it was the entire month of June. Yes. We ran a special the entire month of June, and we're planning on doing that again this year to encourage more women to play.
And in the rates, who oversees the golf pro shop?
Todd Goodyear. He could not be here this evening, he's sick.
And that, that is run by the Parks and Rec, or is that his own private?
That's his own private.
Because I do think that it, you know, I've heard from some folks that, you know, that they would like to see more women's gear in there, so if it's going to be on town property, there should be equal access to women's gear in that pro shop. So, I don't know if that can be rated in, or who buys the supplies if the town doesn't then, but it should be an all-inclusive
Yeah, he
Representation.
purchases all of the clothing out of his own budget, and then recoups that through sales.
Right. So, if it's on town property, do they, does he rent the space? Is that, are those rates filling up, or how does, how is that space allotted?
No, he doesn't pay rent for that space.
Okay. So, yeah, so for some people that have reached out, if they're going to have a pro shop that's representative of the town, it should be representative of all gender, you know, it should have equal part women's gear in there.
Yeah, I believe he does have
My question is, is these rates going up? I'm really concerned about our seniors that are on fixed incomes, and 5% increase, when most people aren't getting a 5% increase in salary. It's hard to justify that. Could you speak to that at all?
Sure. I think it reflects the fact that the cost of operating a golf course is going up.
Well, let's be clear, the season passes for the seniors did not go up in this proposal. The only rate that's going up for a senior proposal is the cart before 9 o'clock.
Well, considering most seniors sometimes have some disabilities, I'm concerned that we're affecting their ability of mobility.
Councillor's time is expired.
Is there any rates, changes for people with disabilities to get a cart at a lower rate so that they can golf?
Councillor's time is expired.
If you could just answer the question.
We don't have a golf cart rate for disabled players.
We own a disabled cart that we allow them to take if need be.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to recommend a resolution to approve the proposed 2023 Shenacostet golf course rates as presented, so moved.
Second, Casiri.
Moved by Melendez, seconded by Casiri. Councillor McBride?
Just a couple of quick questions for clarification. The nine-hole league resident versus non-resident is the same, but in most other areas, the residents are paying less. And I'm just wondering, why are those the same for residents versus non-residents? And should they be less for residents? I guess it's kind of a question.
I guess the best answer would be the leagues are run by, say, Electric Oak and Pfizer, so we didn't want to distinguish them. Some of them give subsidations for their greens fees, some don't. That's really all I can speak to, is to that, as to why it wouldn't be different.
Okay. And the second point, so I would, sorry, I was going to say tournament rates. You know, that's a diverse group of people. That would include both residents and non-residents. So, it'd be really difficult to, you know, organizing a tournament, saying, "Okay, you pay this rate, you pay this rate, because you're a resident, you're a non-resident." I mean, typically, when you play in a tournament, there's, there's one rate. No, I understand that, thank you. And I did notice that on a tournament weekday and the tournament weekend, that's precisely what you're talking about. I was referring to the nine-hole league. It's the same price, because I would recommend that, that price be decreased, even if it's a few dollars, just that, because everywhere else, we are residents who pay taxes, I think should get a tax break, but that's up for the council to consider.
Well, I think it's the same issue as, you know, in a league, you've got people that live in town and people that don't live in town, so.
Right, but they could show you a license that says, "I'm from Groton."
Yeah.
I'm just saying, you consistently, throughout, you do that.
Right.
Not in the nine-hole league, so. It's not material dollars, it's just the concept of everywhere else, our residents get a break, and I think they should get a break on that as well. My other quick point is, the seniors before 9:00 AM, and I agree that, I see that the rates didn't increase, but I would question the, the golf cart going up, not 5%, I see it as 33%, going up from 15 to now 20. I also believe we should support our seniors to keep them active and encourage them, and I would, I would like this council to consider keeping that at 15 as well. So, those are the two changes that, if this council has to update, I'll make a motion on the next round. So, those are my thoughts. Thank you, though.
Just wanted to touch base on the, the idea of like, income-based fee, which I love, I think it's a great idea. Just something for the council to keep in mind, we'll probably need to have some decision-making from the council. The current charge of the golf course is to eventually become independent on its own. We fund right now the CIPs, and they're trying to make a go of the general operations. So, if we start lowering it, we're going to probably have to start funding some of the operations, which is completely up to the council, though, so.
Councillor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you, I, just to follow on to Councillor McBride, can you talk a little bit more about the cart rate on the, on the seniors before 9:00 AM? That's, we've had a number of seniors who have reached out about this, and, and they're concerned about the fees, and a lot of them are older people in their 80s, I guess, who play at that time, and just concerned about that money on people with limited incomes.
Right. Again, we were just trying to simplify the rates, you know, come down from 25 different rates and just reduce it. It's also, I think Shenacostet is one of the only golf courses around that even has a senior rate. You know, it's rather unique to Shenacostet, and most other courses, we're right at market level, and in fact, in one instance, in Norwich, they're charging $25, and you pay whether you're 12 years old or 87.
Is it, would it materially hurt the golf course if we lowered that back down to the 15?
No.
So, we could do that with
Yes.
it to be okay? I'd like to make a motion, to, I don't know whether Councillor McBride is going to be able to, okay. Make a motion to lower the senior before 9:00 AM cart fee, and I'll do it for residents and non-residents, being that it's the same at the moment, so. And I'm assuming they thought those people just play together, so.
Okay.
So, back to last year's number of 15.
All right. So, just add it back in?
Just add it back in.
I'll second that.
At 15. I got a motion by Jones and a second by Bordalung. Okay. Councillor Casiri?
Thank you. Do you know your demographics for that age group, for the seniors before? Is it going to affect like, 10 people, 30 people?
If I were to guess, I would say probably 10 to 15 people.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Bordalung?
Yes. I can also agree with the nine-hole, so I'd like to make another motion. I guess I'll defer to you, Mark Berry. You know, what would be a fair resident rate for that? So, there, I think as a taxpayer, we should have a different rate for the nine-hole, as it was stated by Councillor McBride.
You're speaking on the nine-hole league rate?
Correct. There should be some difference for residents with proof of ID.
I would say if you wanted to keep that lower, move the non-resident to 22, which matches some of the other nine-hole rates there.
The nine-hole league
Nine-hole league, non-resident.
They're both at the same.
Oh, they're, I'm
That's, that's what we're
Wrong line item.
I'm sorry?
I was one line below, sorry.
That's okay.
Then move the nine-hole league to 20.
To 20?
For residents.
Okay.
Take two bucks off.
So, my motion would be what Councillor Jones stated for the senior cart rate, but I also would add that.
I'll second that.
You can just make your amendment. Okay. So, I have a motion.
Which line, are you on?
Yeah, so
The nine-hole league, there was nine.
There's a bunch of nine-hole leagues.
Yeah, just to be clear. So, we, is this weekday or weekend, holiday?
Let's see, there's no nine-hole league on the weekends.
If you read it, it's only on there once, on the league, it's at the top.
Greens fees weekday, right in the middle.
Yeah.
All right, so the proposal is 25. I said 20, I take that back. All right. So the proposal is 25. I said 20. I take that back. Should it just go back to 22?
Okay. It's just, okay. So there's also nine-hole, but it's just the top nine-hole league. It's the third one down in greens fees.
Correct.
Okay.
Well, I guess, so I guess I should ask a clarifying question to understand. Under green fees, I see nine-hole league, nine-hole after 12:00 PM, nine-hole after 3:00 PM. What I'm asking is the nine-hole as a whole should have a resident discount?
The ones that we're proposing to eliminate that have a timestamp on them, we're trying, a number of years ago, we weren't busy enough to fill that timeframe. So we were trying to figure out ways to generate revenue. So we created these categories after 12, after 3, to try to fill some of those spots with at least some money coming in versus nothing because a blank tee time doesn't get you anything.
Right. All right. I see the other common hammer where it's eliminated. So yes, that would be the nine-hole. And it says 22 and 22, if I'm reading that correct, for resident and non-resident. Is that correct?
For nine-hole after 12?
Nine-hole league up, straight up.
Nine-hole league, yes.
Straight up at the top, number three down under green fees.
Yep.
That's where I was looking for the discount.
So that's where we're putting the discount. Yes, correct.
20, okay.
22.
20. He changed it.
It's, the motion I have is $20 on nine-hole league.
Correct.
He changed his recommendation.
But that's still the motion I have.
What's the recommendation amount, you would say?
I would say do not raise the resident, the $3 to the 25. Keep it at 22.
Right, but we're asking, so the resident would be 22 and the non-resident would be 25?
Correct.
Okay. So I'm willing to do that. So I would amend my motion to state that, as long as there's a difference for, you know, in-town residents.
Okay. So I have a motion, an amended motion for nine-hole league.
22 for residents, 25 for non-residents.
Okay.
We've got two minutes.
And then my reason for that would be the fact that there should be definitely a benefit of living here as a taxpayer to have some discrepancies as far as, you know, fees and benefits. And so in future, when looking at these, I think that the resident fee should not be the same as the non-resident. And the other, you know, there's some other, I mean, that's, I think, definitely in the carts, which was already changed, I think is vitally important to our seniors. I mean, the mode of transportation for, they should not have the money on the backs of the seniors at all. And I just want to make sure this amendment is going to keep the cart fee for non-residents and residents the same. Is that correct?
You're, that's not included in this amendment. That's Counselor Jones' amendment, and he has $15 on each.
Right. So I was going to put down another, you said you were just amending onto his. So I would be willing to put amendment down on the floor. My motion would include exactly the senior fee as well as the nine-hole league as one motion.
For 15 and 15?
Correct. So I'm trying to make a motion on the floor that encompasses the senior debacle and the nine-hole debacle all in one, as was stated by Counselor McBride.
Okay, I understand. But we already have that amendment. So we're going to vote on, we're going to vote on your amendment, then we're going to vote on Counselor Jones' amendment.
That doesn't make any sense to me because my amendment is allowed to have a compass of multiple amendments within it.
I understand. I understand.
So I'm confused.
But there's no confusion. If someone wants to vote for one and not for the other, if you keep them separate, then someone's allowed to do that. Whereas if you put them all together, then they have to vote in a package. We've already have, you're making the same exact motion, but we're not going to discuss this anymore. Do you have any more?
I asked for a rules from the town manager then.
The amendment that you are making is already on the floor. It's already on the floor.
Correct. But if that one doesn't pass, my other amendment would have both all encompassed in which we could just pass the one.
Okay. I've already made my ruling.
I'm just asking.
Is there anyone else for discussion?
I have a question for the town manager. I still have time left.
Is there any, is there anyone else for discussion?
So I have, I'd like to do a rule referral then for a recess to ask because I don't understand why we can't, but I cannot put them. I've done it in the past.
There's no referral in a recess. We can't have a meeting in a recess.
We can have, we can defer, refer this to rules. There's no reason I can't put a motion on with both.
Okay. I'm sorry, Counselor Bordelon? We cannot have a rules meeting. There's no posted for a rules meeting.
I didn't say a rules meeting. I would like it to be discussed. I can.
Okay. Is there any other discussion?
I don't know.
Counselor Casiri?
Can I just ask a point of information on, so what you're ruling is that we can vote for these separately?
Yeah.
If we would like to. And then the final vote will encompass whichever ones we vote for. Is that how you're ruling?
Yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify.
Thank you.
So I have a point of information. So we're, you're wanting to separate them, which I'm just.
No, I'm not. Counselor Jones made an amendment, then you made an amendment. We're not discussing this anymore. If there's no other discussion, we're going to move to vote.
Aye.
Okay. So you know further this question?
Point of information?
No. We call for the vote. First, we will vote on Counselor Bordelon's amendment, which is to change the nine-hole league greens fees, $22 for residents, $25 for non-residents. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Carers unanimously eight in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. We'll now vote on Counselor Jones' motion. This is to put $15 for the golf carts rates on both resident and non-resident. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Carers unanimously eight in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. Now we will vote on the main motion as amended twice. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Carers unanimously eight in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. Thank you.
Thank you.
Onto Claude Chester property, public feedback presentation. Director Berry is here for this one as well.
Good evening. Mark Berry, Director of Parks and Recreation. Thanks to my immediate right is Chad Frost from Kenton Frost. Chad is here this evening to present the results from the latest public gathering, or public information session. We've made a presentation to the public last month, and they're here this evening to present those results.
Good evening, everyone. Again, Chad Frost from Kenton Frost, Landscap Architecture. Good to be in front of you again. Included in your packet is both the Greater Groton direct printout as well as then our summary included for both of, for you to be able to look through both. I just want to highlight, in my opinion, the value of the Greater Groton website for this particular project, that we had over 2,700 people, residents that have participated, at least educated themselves, looked at the project through that website. And a lot of the towns we work at, they don't have that type of feature. And so that's, I just want to commend the town for doing that because we did get quite a bit of participation. So as I mentioned, over 2,000 people were aware, 1,200 people were what's considered informed because they went deeper into the study. We engaged 439 people. And in the end, we had over 100 people add contributions to the online forum. And as I get started, I just want to address, I did get an email very late this afternoon, which I believe all the council got as well, from a concerned resident who was concerned that some of their comments might not have been accounted for in our summary tonight. I take that very seriously. Again, I got it at about 5:00. So I haven't really had time to look into it, but we definitely will, and I'm happy to report back to you. And I'm also happy to meet with that particular individual on one-on-one to go through what their comments were and make sure that they are included as we continue forward. Our goal is definitely 100% inclusion. We do not knowingly admit any information whatsoever. Along that, give you a little background on kind of the data. We get the numbers from the town, from the online website. In this particular case, last Thursday, the town kind of pulled the data off mid-morning. We wanted it up there as long as possible, which gave us a short amount of time to get all that data synthesized, back into a summary and back to you to be able to get into your packet for Thursday afternoon. The numbers come through untouched, so all the actual data, the survey results, just go right on through. The comments have to be transposed. So as they come back through the online portal, we have to copy and paste them manually. There's 110 pages of comments, of information, I should say, one kind of comment per each person. And we summarize that tonight into 10 single-spaced pages for you. So we believe we have everything in there, but as I mentioned, we'll definitely go back and double-check. So included, as I mentioned, is that raw output the town provided as well as our summary. And to go into that summary a little bit, if you'll recall, we had a couple of options that we had proposed. We had the three different plans that we proposed, and we had a great turnout here a couple of months ago. The room was packed, standing room only, and many of you were here for that. I'll just recall, option number one, that was where we had the two multi-use fields and the 50-70 field at Claude Chester with aquatics and a splash pad at the community center. Option number two was the multi-use athletic fields and the 50-70 field at Claude Chester with the splash pad at Aquatic Plains. And option three was the multi-use athletic fields and the aquatic center with a splash pad at Claude Chester and the 50-70 field at the community center. And so what we got back from the residents, online summary.
Excuse me. Excuse me. Can we share this presentation online? Sorry to interrupt.
Yep, not a problem. The quick summary from what was online, about 40% of respondents chose option three, which was the most expensive option. 23% chose option two, 22% chose option one, and then we had others and no, which accounted for about another 20%. Those are the graphics. And then really, the summary of both the in-person and the online data is on that first page of our report. And there, again, the numbers changed slightly from in-person to, and the online tool. But the, we want to call it the winner, but the highest vote getter between both was the option number three, which was the two multi-use fields and the aquatic center at Claude Chester. That was that roughly $40 million option. That got about 38% of total vote between online and in-person. The next was option number one, which got about 25%.
Page, page, page.
Come on the next page. So this is all the town data, what's being scrolled through right there. This is how it gets outputted.
Is it page 30?
Page 30?
Yep. I'm not sure what it is in your pack.
Or are we on 39?
You're on this page, right?
This page.
39.
Right.
There. That one, right there. Perfect. So you can see across the top, the totals. You can see across the bottom, the chart. As I was just explaining, so the green is the option number three with 38% of the vote. The blue, option number one, with 25%. The orange is option number two with 21%. And then we did have a handful of write-ins and some additional comments, which accounted for another about 14%. And really, what we were aiming for, if you'll recall, when we started this process almost a year ago, was to help Park and Rec be able to figure out what type of fields might want to go on this property. If fields wanted to go here, it was the number one. What first uses? We looked at, should economic development come in here? Should we use this for housing? Should we use it for multi-use? We had some input on all of that. We narrowed that down into the program elements. Those program elements are what we put on the plan and then what we voted on, or what the public voted on over the last couple of months. And so really, from my perspective, what we were trying to get for Park and Rec was a consensus from the public as to what did they want this property to be used for. When I look at this, I see definitely the most expensive option people really liked. And we got a lot of comments about the need for an aquatic center. As I've mentioned to you before, I was shocked by the aquatic center. I shouldn't have been, but I was just because it wasn't on the top of my radar. But it came out in the initial public input, and it was voted on pretty highly. And we had a lot of comments supporting it in multiple locations. But even if you were to, say, look at option one, two, and three, all had significant support compared to the option of just do nothing, right? We had basically one respondent say, we don't want to do anything. And a couple with some write-ins to do some additional things like economic development, which had already kind of been ruled out through the process as we went forward. So from my opinion, what I would recommend is that Park and Rec has money allocated to them almost two years ago to do a larger athletic field study to look at solving the athletic fields across town, both here at Claude Chester, at Sutton Park, and up at the high school. And that money's been on hold while we figured out what could happen here at this site. My opinion is it's pretty clear through this process that the residents are definitely encouraged to have at least the two multi-use fields here. The 50-70 field was a little bit, I'll say, up in the air along with the aquatic center. But now with the 50-70 field literally under development at the community center right now, that decision might be able to wait a little bit. So I would say the direction that you might want to give to the Park and Rec was to go forward with plans and that part of that larger athletic field study to include two athletic, two multipurpose athletic fields at Claude Chester, reserve that one corner where we were showing an aquatic center for a future discussion. So that study can begin so we can get the high school athletics kind of taken care of hopefully in the near future. And then along with that, you would then need to, since there was quite a resounding support from the public for the aquatic center, Park and Rec would then need to proceed with another study to just study the aquatic center. What really should be in there? What should the pool size be, temperatures? We even got some comments about it should be a very warm pool so seniors can use it, or it should be a very cold pool so athletics can use it. And so there's a lot of details to be figured out there with the splash pad, the size, what amenities are in the building. You know, we got a lot of comments that stretched it from an aquatic center into almost a community center, right? And so there's, there's a lot of discussion that needs to happen with that. So I would say on this site particularly, we might just hold that site and let it be a level area that could be developed into the aquatic center in the future, or it could be developed into the 50-70 field, or it could just be a smaller rec field or open space for the town to use in the future. So that's my kind of quick summary. Anything else from you, Mark, or questions?
No, I'm actually not surprised that there's such an interest in an aquatics facility. I think if you go back to the 1986 survey, the 2009 survey, and the 2020 survey, all of those have been pretty clear that the residents are interested in aquatics facility. And I hope this time that it doesn't go just that far, that it actually, we take the next step and do a feasibility study to understand exactly what it is we're talking about as far as an aquatics facility.
All right.
Can you go over some of the other questions?
Some of the questions that we were asking?
With the survey, so that people at home can see, like, maybe a couple more of the other pages that were here?
Sure. Yep. The question two was, should the town phase the project? Ninety people basically said no, 56 people said yes. Yep, that's that slide. Continuing on, question three was, how important is this project to you? And how much would you be willing to have a tax increase to support it? This one looked at basically, again, the $22 million project. Zero project got 20 people replying. $22 million project got 44 people. The $21 million project, 30 people. The $40 million project was 64 people. And we did, as you can see maybe on the screen, we did break that down into what that might approximate in a average increase on a taxes on a typical house within Groton. And then the following couple of slides, or the following page is just the bar graphs that go along with that and how people voted. We did ask people if they wanted a one-year increase, just one massive increase to pay for it all at once, or to spread it out over 20 years. They're again somewhat surprised. Some people said just do. They're again somewhat surprised, some people said, just do it all at once and get it over with, but the majority did say to spread it out over 20 years. Question four was asking about grants, and if the town should pursue grants to do this project. 135 people said yes, 6 people said no. And that was basically the summary of the questions, and then we did ask for comments, additions, and or removals from each phase, and that's what summarized in the 10 pages of comments afterwards.
Thank you. So I'll make a motion to recommend a resolution authorizing the town manager, John Burt, or his designee, to move forward with hiring a firm to complete design services for the documented field needs for high school and youth sports in Groton. So moved.
Second, Franco.
Moved by Melinda, seconded by Franco. Counselor Casiri?
Thank you. Thank you for being here. So we did receive that email. I got it today around 4:00. So I just wanted to touch base on it. So the email was basically accusing the consultants of, quote, selectively presenting the responses from the survey, end quote, claiming you're hiding some, but displaying others. And obviously, you've already addressed it, and obviously, you weren't purposely withholding information as you addressed.
Definitely not.
Okay. And if you find anything, are you committed to?
We will report everything back to you 100%.
Perfect. And Mr. Burt, if we do get any updated, can we get that on the town website?
Sure.
Perfect. Okay, great. Also, the email claimed that this person says, quote, "I have very serious concerns that the questions were specifically written to direct a positive response towards one of the options. This is highly suspect," and goes on to give an opinion about it. You just read some of the questions to us. I wanted to just highlight the rest, what should be included in the different phases, how important is this project to you, and how much would you be willing to increase taxes to support it. Then it goes over the different concepts and the funding options. The town may be eligible for grants to cover a portion of the cost. Should the town pursue grants to do the project? And please provide any additional feedback. So I think that they're very neutral questions. I don't really hear anything that's leading anyone in a particular direction. Do you have any commentary on that?
All I would say is, we do try to ask very fair questions to try to get the best responses we can. As I indicated, the aquatic center wasn't something that had been on our initial list when we first started talking about it, and it came out, and now it's one of the greatest responses. So definitely, we try to ask a fair question. We ask the zero to the dream project, if you will, from the public perspective, looking for all of that feedback. And then leave the open-ended questions for people to be able to provide additional feedback as they require.
Great. And they all seemed pretty neutral to me. I'm not quite sure where that person was going with that. And they were pretty clear and concise, and you did give that option for additional feedback if we wanted to get more information. And I also wanted to bring up, because I had some people reach out about why the pool was included, but the pool was included because of all of our initial feedback from the community, correct?
It was requested to be in there, yeah. So if you'll recall, when we first started, we just kind of put an open book out there, what does the public want? And what we heard back is what we put back out there, let people vote on it. We took those votes and put them on the plan. And so trying to be very inclusive for whatever the public wants for this particular piece of property.
Great. And this goes all the way back to when we were at the senior center, I'm sorry, Thrive 55, and we had the red dots on board. So this has been a long process of getting community feedback, and the aquatic center was something that people want.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Frost. This is great. Can you just talk a little bit about your recommendation? I'm just a little, I just want to get clarification on what you're recommending. Are you recommending further design things on these one, two, and three proposals? Or is it all of the, like, the original Fields Task Force at Sutton Park and Fitch High School? So are you kind of, it's going to be all of that?
Excellent question. Thank you for having me clarify. Basically, two kind of proposals going forward. One, for the Athletic Fields Task Force, that Park and Rec does have funding available to hire consultants to do the more detailed designs for athletic fields at Claude Chester, at Sutton Park, and at the high school. To be able to come up with real, like, these are conceptual plans, right? We know it'll fit spatially, but there's a lot more detail that has to be worked out, and then real cost estimates that have to be worked out, to get to the point to be able to go back to the public to say how much the projects really could cost, get to the point of going to a referendum if that's how you choose to go. And so that's a step for the athletic fields, is to start that process. Again, the funding's been in place for a number of years, and so this was the holdout to get some clarification as to what athletic fields, if any, wanted to happen on this property. And now that I think we've heard pretty strongly that definitely the two multi-use fields are going to go here, that then, that the town could proceed with that project to identify how those fields would fit here specifically, and at Sutton Park, and at the high school. So that's one recommendation. The other recommendation is then the pool, the aquatic center, and that Park and Rec start to go down that process of looking to engage an architect to do the aquatic study, to figure out how big the building is, how many pools, what are all the amenities, and that sort of thing. So two recommendations.
Is there enough money, and the original money set aside, to do both of these things? Or need to have additional money for the aquatic features?
The money that was approved in FYE 22 was just for the fields.
Okay.
The council will have an opportunity to discuss an aquatics feasibility study at the upcoming presentations of CIPs.
So that's where you have placed it. So even though Claude Chester, let's just say, like, I think it's option three that has the aquatic center in Claude Chester, you'll just move up to the fields portion of Claude Chester and leave the hole in this, in the original money, you'll just leave a hole there until some more money is assigned to go for those aquatic features? Is that, that's right?
Yes.
Okay. So everything that you've talked about, like, in the presentation that you did here, which was, you were correct, is very well attended, everything that had to do with fields will be included in what you're currently doing?
Yeah, it would be in what the next project would be for athletic fields, and then a subsequent project to do the aquatic center specific.
Will come later.
Yep.
Okay. Right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Counselor Franco?
So, being on the Athletic Fields Task Force, and I also voted in favor of putting this money towards them. I do know that Athletic Fields Task Force has been waiting a long time for this council to make this decision on what to do at Claude Chester, and it took time, because we had to get the community input, and then we had to come back with an answer. So I am fully in favor of going forward to be able to have the town manager sign off and get a firm to complete the design services. And do you have anybody in mind for that, for the design services?
No, we would put together probably an RFQ and go through that process.
All right.
Request for qualifications.
And that person would also come to the Athletic Fields Task Force and go over all that has been discussed there, and the locations that have been discussed over the years, and the wants and needs, and all those type of things.
And all this data would be provided to them.
Right.
Okay. And they will definitely come back with pricing, so that we could prepare and go out for a referendum, if possible?
Yeah, I think part of the RFQ would include, or part of the proposal would include the consultant looking at various funding options, so that when they came to make the presentation, you know, both to the public and the council, part of that would be, you know, here are funding options available to you.
Right. And from the survey, the question number two said, should the town phase in the project? Meaning, like, piecemeal it, like, here, we'll do some through the CIP process. And a majority of the people said no. At 94 people said no, versus 56 that wanted it. So basically, what I'm hearing in that says they want it all at once, and let's just try and do it all together, if that's how I'm reading it correctly.
I would agree.
And if there were options to do something different at Claude Chester, they are here in the write-ups of people's recommendations, whether they wanted to add or remove, or do something totally different, they could write their suggestions in there as well.
Yep.
All right. We are one step closer, I think, and I'm very happy about that. So thank you very much for all that you've done, and all the time and energy you've put into this, and all the community input that you have done. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Counselor Boralon?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I just want to clarify, the numbers here in the graph on page 39, it says 62, and you have your total here, 41, 34. Those are people, not percents, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So for me, as a counselor, we're representing 40,000 people in the town of Groton. 62 people want the $40 million option. 41, I mean, what percent, if we take that into a percent total of the whole community, you think there's 20,000 registered voters, okay, let's take it, break it down to that percent. It's not even 25% of the population here. So for me, even though the presentation is wonderful, as a person who's been on the Athletic Task Force, who graduated from Fitch, this does not address the immediate concerns that are originally addressed with the fact that our sports field at Fitch High School are outdated, our bleachers, our sports field, this will help in some ways. But I've been asking all along that we, yes, I went to the dot session, which was, you know, there was maybe 40, 50 people there, 20 people were at some office, either RTM or standard on some type of board and commission. I was one of those people that were there. So that, to me, I feel like now we did the gathering, and what I had asked, we had that other public thing, presentation, it's baby steps. Now is the time, now, to take all three of these options, take this data, and have a formal, public presentation with dialogue, where people, it's posted in the paper, and people can come speak to these three things. I don't feel comfortable, as a single elected person of nine, to make a decision on behalf of 20,000 voters and 40,000 people based on a number of 62 people. Not saying that this doesn't look good, but this is really putting the pressure on. Those other two public things didn't have thousands, and I mean, I feel our work is not done, and I feel that we need a chance now to present our findings to the public in an official capacity. Has that been thought of?
Well, in all due respect, I believe that has been done. And when we do this around multiple municipalities, you might look at these individuals and think that's a low number, and it is when you look at, compared to your entire population. But when you look at what we actually get from feedback from the public, in most instances, this is actually pretty good. And that might seem sad to you, but that's just the status of how things are right now. And when we did have the public meeting here, which was advertised in the papers, and in Facebook, and in multiple places online, and as well as posters around town, and we presented these concepts in this very room, we had standing room only, right? Now granted, that's not, the entire town of Groton will not fit in this building, right? But we had quite a few people, as many as we could get in here for that presentation. So to do it again, we could fill this room again, and I don't know if you're going to get, you might not feel any more comfortable, because it's going to be another 50, 60, maybe 100 people. And so I hear you, I understand, but this is how we have to make most of these decisions, short of, you know, full-on elections where we invite the entire public out. And I think the real election would be that referendum, right?
That's fair.
But we need to get to that point. We need to fix the fields at the high school, which I know you're very passionate about. We can't move forward with that. We can't go to even begin to start to fix those, to figure out how much money it might be to fix them, if we can't move past this and what we're going to put at Claude Chester.
Thank you. So that public meeting with standing room only I attended, that was just like discussion, it wasn't a decision. People weren't picking the three options. So I agree. It was the dialogue was starting, but they were not tasked with the opportunity of saying, here's one, two, and three, here's the prices, which one do you want?
Excellent.
It was more of a discussion where people got to raise their hand and kind of, you know, talk about the options. But I really do think, and not everyone got to speak because the mic got spun around, I really think the next step would be one more, and if we're talking about $40 million, what's one more public outreach now, in the scheme of things? I just don't understand what the rush would be.
So I'm not trying to rush anything, we've been here for a year. But what I would say is, during that in-person meeting, we did pass, everybody got a piece of paper, and everybody voted and filled it out. And they filled out the exact same questions that we then posted online, so they'd be the exact same questions being answered both ways.
Right.
So there was voting in that room that night. What I will also say that might provide some comfort is, this is not the end. Tonight, you are not signing off on a $40 million check to go build everything, right? This is, let's take the next step to design the fields for Claude Chester, and then maybe take another step, as you'll get to decide when you do the budget, to maybe fund, to do the aquatic center study, right? But it allows the work to go forward for athletic fields around town to start solving the problems. And you will get to have a lot of comment and a lot of input on all of those decisions, what fields, what amenities actually start to go here. This is not a construction drawing by any stretch. We have to get to that point for this field, for Sutton Field, and for high school. So there's a lot of input that will still be able to be accommodated as we go forward.
And so what is the cost of the town to move forward with this next step?
Well, the...
The council has already appropriated $200,000 to do the study. And that was done in FYE 22.
And that's what it would cost?
Or less. I mean, it has to go, like, as Mark said, it has to go out for public proposals, and you solicit firms all over to come back and give you, but we have to be able to tell those firms what they're trying to design, right? And up till now, we haven't been able to say what could go at Claude Chester. Is it one field? Is it two fields? Is it three? Is it none?
I just feel comfortable with one more, I think there needs to be one more public outreach, and that would make me feel much more comfortable. Doesn't mean that I'm not for any of these. I think that we should give the public one more opportunity to deliberate on this. Now, they've had time to absorb it.
Counselor's time is expired. Thank you. Counselor Franco?
Thank you. That's what I was also going to throw in there, is like, this isn't the final decision. This is just to give you the go-ahead for, to get the designers in there to start saying, these are the areas they can go, here's how much it's going to cost. I would assume that once they come back with some designs and pricing, it's going to be presented back to the council. Then we're going to ask the community for some more input, because we're going to want more input before we go to a referendum, because we don't want to just throw it out for a referendum without their input on maybe what direction they're looking for. And same as, like, the schools, I mean, sometimes you have to tweak, even if they go to one referendum, they might not like that, they might want some changes. So it might be more than one referendum. Because ultimately, which would make me extremely happy, would be that our community would choose this. They would decide what they want. We're just sort of giving the platform to figure out where to go to get there. Not everybody's going to be happy with the, maybe the final, but the majority will vote on it and choose what they want. But I think there has been lots of public input, numerous opportunities. I think you've also, I think I've seen emails and social media, and, I mean, there's been numerous outreaches in all different types, and I think you've done a very good job at that. And it was up to people to respond. It's up to the community to show up if they want to have a say in this. Or, on the other hand, they're leaving it up to their elected officials to choose. I mean, I don't know how much more you can reach out to people, newspapers, and, so I think you've done numerous events, and I'm very happy with what you've done, and I'm very confident to go forward to start the next step in this process. And again, I thank you for all that you've done, and I don't know how else to make this better for our community in any different process to make this better. It's been very open and transparent, and welcoming to everybody and inclusive. And I thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Jacom?
I think, I believe I missed it earlier, but what were the total respondents, including, if you got the number from, you know, the public hearing or presentation that you gave as well?
The total number of the people that participated in this latest was 160.
160, okay. And so just to clarify, as well to the public, you're just looking to the approval to move forward, because the allocation of the funds are already there for the fields and not the conceptual plans, correct?
Correct.
Okay. No, I can agree that there was, I think, plenty of public input, and there's still more opportunity for more, as always, both at our regular council meetings, and always reaching out to our emails. So I am confident in moving forward. Thank you.
Counselor Casiri?
Thank you. I know we go over this every time. Can you just give us a brief overview of how significant, like, the 2,700 people reached is compared to other municipalities you've worked in?
Yeah, again, kind of going back to how I started, I think it's a phenomenal tool to be able to have, and when I do go back to the main page on this, 2,700 people visited, right? And I would agree that it sounds, you know, to only get 160 to totally go all the way through and fill everything out, doesn't sound great, but 2,700 people knew about it, and 160 chose... to participate all the way through. In, in a lot of municipalities, we don't have this tool as the Greater Groton. And we do Facebook class, and we put it on social media, and we try to put it in the papers. But you're only doing, you know, those couple of in-person participation meetings, and you might have an email or a website set up to receive some comments back. But to be able to do online studies, leave it up there for months on time, be able to pull the data off at a couple of different checks to see how it's going, is a phenomenal tool. So I, I agree. I mean, I think we've, we've put it out there a ton, and you can even track a little bit the participation. You can see when planning pushes out another, you know, social media hit, and it kinda spikes up with some people paying attention. And so I think it does take a couple, in this day and age, it takes a couple of pushes to get people, they might see it the first time and think, oh, I wanna do that, and then not do it. And then by the second, third, fourth time, they've participated. So it is a great tool.
Great. And when you've come to us before, you've talked about how you're not seeing the participation or the attendance that you're seeing in regards to this project in other municipalities, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And again, we, we can't force people to participate, we can't, you know, I, I think we're doing enough to, to try and pull people. I know that my, my children play for Groton Soccer Club, I know that the, the youth athletic clubs are forcing emails out to parents. I've gotten several emails asking for participation in these surveys, and asking for them to come to the meeting. So even with that kind of outreach of the sports clubs trying to reach parents to participate in these things, these are still the numbers that we're getting, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And I did wanna just highlight the fact that many of us do attend these meetings, and I think it is a great opportunity for the public to come and reach out to us while we're at these meetings, because we're ultimately gonna be making these decisions. And I don't necessarily think it's a bad thing that we're all at these meetings, because it is giving them just another opportunity. And people do have the opportunity to continuously reach out to us throughout this process, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Counselor McBride?
Thank you. I, I support this. I'm, I'm in favor of the fields, and I appreciate the process that you followed. I think you've done a lot of due diligence, had a lot of participation from the public. So I'm in favor of moving this forward. I just have a couple of questions on, I, I am concerned, or have questions, I should say, on the Aquatic Center and the costs, and also operational costs of such a facility. But I wanna make sure, back to Counselor Jones's question, this is just a field, so it's, there's no splash pad or anything in this design that's all separate. So it's just the fields that we're focused on.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. And one last question, more for the residents. Could you just explain briefly the costs, so that way we can put it on the record for what this will be? I know it's in here, but if you can just maybe let the residents know the various costs and the taxpayer.
On the record, that's harsh. So what we did do is, these are based on a very high-level conceptual plan, as I tried to illustrate, you know, to the public in the meetings. But we wanted it to be somewhat realistic. We didn't wanna, you know, misinform anybody that they think they could build a field for, you know, twenty-five dollars or something, right? So we did real, honest cost estimates, it's based on the information we have right now. That obviously has to get refined as plans go forward. So, option one, which was the, the two multi-use fields at Claude Chester, and the fifty-seventy baseball field at Claude Chester, with a smaller aquatic center and splash pad at the community center, was approximately a twenty-two million dollar project.
Hey, I guess my question was more the, the taxpayer, the annual cost for the taxpayer for that project.
Yep. So on that one, on the, on the twenty-two million dollar project, it would have, if it was twenty-two million dollars and it was spread out over twenty years, that's about a seventy-seven dollar increase annually, on the average home in Groton, based on the current mill rate. The, the option two project was slightly cheaper at twenty-one million dollars, so that went down slightly, it was seventy-four dollars a year. And then the forty million dollar project, spread out over twenty years, was approximately a hundred and thirty-seven dollars additional tax per year for those twenty years. Thank you.
Counselor Bordelon?
Uh, thank you. So this study, and with the motion that we're gonna approve, would also look at the high school fields?
Absolutely.
So that they would be up there looking at how to return everything, including the concession stands and that whole layout up there, or just the fields?
Hundred percent. No, everything.
And when you say seventy-seven dol, seventy-seven annually on twenty-two million, what are we saying that average, what are you predicting the average cost here in the town of Groton is?
It was the mean home value.
And what is that value?
I'm trying to remember now. I don't have it in my notes, but I, I believe it was in that three hundred, three hundred and fifty thousand dollar range. But it was the mean home value across Groton, and it was applied to the, the mill rate as of last year, or the twenty, twenty-two mill rate. So that, so obviously, if you have, if your home value is less than the mean value, it would be a little less than that. If your home value is more than the mean value, your taxes would be more. So I could give it the other way, which is, the twenty-two million dollars is a point nine-eight percent increase, the twenty-one is a point nine-four percent increase, and the forty million is a one-point seven-five percent increase. If that makes it easier, then people could apply that directly to their current bill.
And then my other question is, you know, we, we made that, you know, thing that we said we're gonna be looking at sustainable resiliency, we hired a manager for all of that. Is there any efforts here in this to, to really look at what we're planting, what we're putting in for turf, what we're putting in for fields, long-term, you know, weighing the cost on that, the cost on the environment in that area? It is a wetland area, that whole area. So I know going to Aquatic Plains Park, you can't even walk half the, the gravel track there because it's flooded. So when we look at this, is, is that being taken into effect as well, and making sure that they're, they're using our sustainable manager, you know, resiliency, and looking at that, that area?
I would say a hundred percent. Yeah, a, any projects going forward should have that participation on, on how that sustainability can be incorporated into whatever the project is. One of the opportunities I see at Claude Chester is, it is, you know, as you mentioned, it's a low area that it doesn't drain well. However, where the fields are, is a depression. There's the possibility that that depression, we could use that as stormwater capacity for large storm events, that underneath the fields is, is gravel instead of just fill. So I think there are the abilities to look at how we could incorporate improvements, and be able to improve the sustainability and resiliency of the town at the same time.
I also think it's important too, to make sure that the neighborhoods in that area are surveyed a little bit more closely with, you know, maybe some mailers out, a lot of everyone's a social media type person, and what the impact is gonna be as we get closer. I think that's important to have those breakout sessions early on. I think it's important to have them close, closely to the area that it's gonna affect. So those are things that I, I hope to see. I do think our fields are struggling in this neighborhood, in this area, in this town, and have been for greater than twenty-something years. This motion just allows us to study the fields, but it doesn't really pick the plan as of yet, is that correct?
Correct, yeah. The, the whole plan needs to be developed. That's the point of the next study, is to figure out the real details. This is a big, a high-level concept. Now you need to do the, the greater details at this site, at Sutton Park, and at the high school.
And I just hope that there will be more outreach after that as we move forward.
Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to give a little perspective on the numbers, just from years of being in direct mail marketing and things. If we use the twenty thousand voters, you had twenty-seven hundred people, so you had thirteen and a half percent of the people voted. So you, to have thirteen and a half percent of the, sort of the active voters in the town come out, this is tremendous to have that kind of thing. The other number that I look at is, you had a hundred and sixty, which seems kinda low, but the number that we always use was thirty. If you had thirty people respond on a survey, it didn't change. Thirty was the thirty, and that was it. So it didn't matter whether you got three hundred or three thousand, it still basically stayed the same. So those numbers are used, you know, across the board. So you had, out of the twenty-seven hundred, you had a little over a half percent, which is a perfectly acceptable number for people doing it. So I think you had a good representation of the community, especially with the twenty-seven hundred. And in the respondents that went all the way through the whole thing, you had five times the number that you might even look at. So I just congratulate you on the well-done surveys and, and all the promotion and marketing that you did to get people to come in. So I think it's, I think your numbers are pretty representative, even though if you don't, if you're not in that world, it might seem kinda low, but if you are, you're going, those numbers are fine, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a couple of quick questions. First, I see in option one and option two, you have that baseball field there. Is that, like, going forward, is that gonna be part of the plan still, or is that gonna, because the other one's getting built, it's gonna be gone? And if that's the case, is there anything that can even fit there, really? I know baseball fields are sort of, I mean, it's not the size of like a, a soccer field or a football field, so is there anything else that could fit there?
So, so my recommendation going forward, if, if the council, of course, chooses to fund that aquatics facility study, would be just to hold that area in reserve, right? It'll just be a level lawn going forward. That, that you authorize the parking rec to start with the RFQ dictating two multi-use fields and the parking in some configuration close to the amount that we're showing. And then that other area could be reserved, it could be a fifty-seventy field in the future, if aquatics never happens. It could be the aquatic center, or if aquatics is selected to be built over at the community center, then it can just be a, a small youth field used for something else, or reserved for whatever future use you guys deem in the future. So I, I just look at it as that area is kind of held and, and virtually untouched, and we work out the rest of the site.
Okay. The other thing was, when you were talking about the average cost, you, you said you used the median, like, value?
Yeah.
But if, my only question is, I think if, if you're gonna use the mill rate, you should use the median assessment. So I, I don't know if that's what you did, because the assessment will be lower than the, than the median, like, sale price. It'll be like seventy-five percent of it or something.
Correct.
So ju, that's just something that pointed out to me, but I have nothing else. Counselor Westphal?
Thank you very much. I look forward to moving forward with this, I think it's really important. And we really won't know where we can go with this until we move beyond this point. So if we don't move beyond it, then we'll never know. So I think we really have to support this and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay. Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, cares unanimously, eight in favor. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Onto Sustainability and Resilience Manager introductory presentation. Welcome.
Good evening. John Reiner, Director of Planning and Development, and with me here tonight is...
Megan Granados, Sustainability and Resilience Manager for the town of Groton.
Nice to meet you.
All right.
So Megan just wanted to introduce herself tonight, talk about some of the projects she's working on, and kinda give everybody an update on what's been happening the last six months.
Thank you so much. Really pleased to meet all of you, and thank you for giving me some time on your agenda this evening. So as John said, just really wanted to introduce myself, face to the name. We're going to be building some exciting things moving forward, and so we want there to be a relationship built, so that, you know, when we come back in future meetings, you'll understand who we are and what we're working on. So with that, if you could advance, John?
Great. Just wanted to start by explaining a bit of the skillset and the background that I'm bringing into this position. So as John mentioned, I've been in this role with the town of Groton for six months. I grew up in Connecticut and was really looking for a position that would allow me to move back home. So thrilled that I was able to join the team here in Groton. As I mentioned, grew up in Connecticut, moved to upstate New York, got a bachelor's degree in biology from Hamilton College, then studied natural resource management with a focus on ecological restoration from North Carolina State University. Career-wise, I started working in the private sector for a consulting firm in California. I lived out there for about three years, and worked as a, first a field biologist, and moved up to being a restoration ecologist. Thank you. It was detailed with doing a number of tasks related to habitat restoration, replanting, studying soils, projects to help heal degraded lands. But the most exciting and the largest job that I was detailed to was the development of the California Valley Solar Ranch, which, at the time it was being designed, it was going to be like the third largest solar ranch in the nation. It was eclipsed by others before we even broke ground. But spent about two years out there doing soils monitoring, habitat restoration, monitoring, monitoring of mitigation lands, and got to experience two years of watching a solar facility be built around me, and learned all about the technology and what it takes to, to plan and actually implement those projects. From California, I moved to Maryland, spent about eight years there, working for the State Department of Natural Resources. I was part of our Chesapeake and Coastal Service Unit, so everything we did was focused on Chesapeake Bay watershed restoration. Started as a grant manager for state funding that implemented water quality improvement projects, so things like stream restorations by retention facilities, rain gardens, et cetera. Moved up into being a program director, and by the time I left, eight years later, I was the director of our Center for Restoration Finance. We manage an annual budget of about fifty more, fifty-four million dollars a year of state and federal funds, all focused on Chesapeake Bay watershed restoration. So I mentioned before, part of that was water quality improvement work, but we also did a ton of work on environmental education, and also climate adaptation. So I co-managed a grant program that worked with local governments, like the town of Groton, to understand and plan to address flood hazards related to climate change. So spent a lot of time talking with local governments about the, the challenges they were facing, and providing tools and resources of things that they could use to try to understand how to become more resilient to those challenges. I also became really involved at the state level, with the State Commission on Climate Change's Adaptation and Resiliency Working Group. Helped spearhead the next decade worth of priority setting for state adaptation actions. And again, was really walking that line of being a state employee, but doing a lot of work that was focused on providing resources to local governments and NGO partners. Thank you. So in the six months I've been here, it's all about setting the course for how we're building this new division within the Office of Planning and Development Services, focused on resiliency and sustainability. And so a lot of that, of course, is not wanting to duplicate efforts, understanding all of the work that has been done by the town to date, and what that foundation is that I'm starting from. I also spent a lot of time and take really seriously cultivating relationships and building the community of people who are going to be working on these things with me. Climate change is, in a way, communication-wise, is, I suppose you could say, easy, because it impacts literally everyone and everything. So there's no shortage of things that you can chat about with people. And, you know, to give you an idea of the types of outreach I've been doing, there's a number of groups that I've been having conversations with. Of course, we have the Town's Resiliency and Sustainability Task Force, several members of which are here this evening. I meet with them monthly to talk about the work that I'm doing. I've been having conversations with the Council of Government, as well as a number of our nearby municipalities, Stonington, of course, the city of Groton, North Stonington. We are also part of the New England Municipal Sustainability Network, and so we have the opportunity to do a lot of peer-to-peer learning with other local governments throughout the Northeast who are grappling with these issues. Had a number of conversations with larger nonprofits, like Save the Sound, the Nature Conservancy, university partners, of course. We're really fortunate that we have UConn Avery Point in our backyard, and that the Connecticut Institute for Resilience and Climate Adaptation, CERC, is on that campus. And I'll talk about K through twelve educational partners in a few slides. In terms of regional partners, I've become a member of the Long Island Sound Studies Citizens Advisory Committee. And so that's another group that's focused on, on the region, and so there's a lot of information sharing, a lot of resources I can bring back to Groton. And of course, local residents. So just having conversations with people as these topics come up, and, and learning more about how climate change is impacting the people that live in our town. And all of this really is a part of understanding existing efforts and jumping in where I can to support them, and starting to chart the course for what we want to be tackling moving forward. So the next couple of slides focus on subject matter-specific topics to give you an update. We wanted to first start with the Downtown Mystic Resiliency and Sustainability Plan. So I was really fortunate that when I started, that grant and that project were just getting up and running. The consultant was hired in April of two thousand twenty-two, and I started in August, so just a couple of months later, I joined the project team. So to give a recap, this project has essentially two main components. The first is a vulnerability assessment, so we're looking at climate hazards related to heat, both... to heat, both, and then flooding as well. So with flooding, it's coastal, like sea level rise, storm surge, as well as flooding caused by large precipitation events, storm our systems being overwhelmed, and so forth. And so once we understand those vulnerabilities, we're going to develop prioritized recommendations for how to become more resilient to them. And those recommendations will be developed at a number of different scales with different audiences. So some of the recommendations are going to be things that local property owners can do to protect their properties, and of course, recommendations will be made for what the town should be doing, and potentially regionally as well. One of the exciting things about this project so far is that there's been a lot of interest from Stonington, and I've had some conversations with them, people have attended our meeting, and so there's, it seems like some interest and enthusiasm for trying to think about what we could potentially do together along the Mystic River corridor. Next steps on that project, if you could just flip back one second. Yep. So we did field assessments in January and March, so I went out with two members of our consultant team. We covered about 120 properties, knocking door by door, to talk to people about their experience with climate change and flooding. Of course, not everyone was home, but we did talk to a ton of people, and got a lot of feedback on how people are living with water and flooding, and specifically talked to them about their properties and certain aspects of their properties that might make them more susceptible. Learned a ton of information, it was a really great way to also just make a lot of connections with the community and hear firsthand about how these problems are impacting people living in our city area. So we're partway through the vulnerability assessment now, and of course, from there, we'll be developing those recommendations that will happen in the summer and fall. We'll have two upcoming public meetings, the next of which is tentatively scheduled for early May. I wanted to talk about funding. So as you all know, right now, there's historic levels of funding through federal partners that can help us move a lot of our interests and our needs forward, which is really exciting. So I spend a significant amount of my time understanding new programs that are being developed through Infrastructure Investment Job Act and the Inflation Reduction Act, because it's a mix. We have some entirely new programs that are being stood up, and then there's some existing programs that I've just gotten influx in larger budgets. So doing a lot of assessing just what the opportunities are, making sure that we're taking advantage of those resources to help position Groton to take advantage of them at the greatest extent that we can. Two proposals that we have submitted were both for the Department of Energy and Environmental Protections Climate Resilience Funds. This is a grant program that was just launched last year, and has two different tracks, and I submitted a proposal to each. So the first track proposal requested funding to support a climate action plan. This was something that was a very large component of my job description, as I was hired to fulfill. And the climate action plan would be the process through which we really set the course for our climate change and resiliency priorities moving forward. It would be built on a lot of community outreach and engagement and conversations. It would address both climate mitigation, so how do we reduce our greenhouse gases, and adaptation. So as sea levels are rising, as we're getting these larger storm events, as we're experiencing more extreme heat, what are the actions that we can take to lessen those burdens? We'll find out about these grant proposals hopefully within a month, but in the meantime, I've started setting the initial steps for what we can do for this climate action plan. So I'm currently working with two interns through the UConn Environmental Core Program about, they're helping us develop climate communication strategies that we can use when we do targeted outreach to try to talk with people in the community about what they're experiencing. So that work will occur up until early May. And then the second proposal, actually was just mentioned in the prior discussion, was focusing on the flooding of Paquana Plains Park. So when we get those large precipitation events, as you have all seen, we end up with a lot of standing water there, it impacts the fields and the walking track. And so if we were successful in our proposal, we would receive money to really understand the sources of the flooding, where the water's coming from, the hydrological connections, and start to identify some approaches that we could take using green infrastructure to reduce the impact of that flooding, and also hopefully provide some water quality benefits at the same time. I mentioned earlier, excuse me, making connections at the K through 12 educational level as well. Perhaps the most successful things that we can do as resilience managers are help provide educational support to build younger generations that are climate literate, because these children have their entire lifetimes ahead of them to make decisions that are going to be impacting, you know, climate change and all the issues that we're grappling with right now. So I'm trying to provide whatever support I can and make partnerships to help advance that work forward. So two examples. One is a partnership I'm developing with Marine Science Magnet High School to hopefully hold a youth climate summit this fall in Groton. So the Youth Climate Summit would follow the approach developed by the Wild Center, which is a nonprofit in upstate New York. It's a student-led, student-driven process through which they build out essentially a one- or two-day conference where they learn all about climate change and the impacts. They get to decide what topic areas they really want to focus on, they get to decide who they want to learn about these issues from. And the thing I really love about the approach is that it culminates with the students developing their own climate action plans, which would provide a really meaningful way for us to then be able to infuse that youth voice into the climate action plan we're developing for the town. Also wanted to mention, there's been a really great partnership between Groton Public Schools and Groton Open Space Association, where several staff on both parties are meeting just to talk about how to get kids outside, how to get kids feeling comfortable out in nature, how to get teachers feeling comfortable using the amazing conserve lands and trails networks that we've had. And so I've been participating in those group discussions as well, just trying to help, again, focus on how we can get children having that connection with nature and taking advantage of all of the great recreational options that we have here in Groton. Something exciting coming up for the summer is that we have a fellow coming on board through the University of New Hampshire Sustainability Institute Fellowship Program. So this was a pretty rigorous process. We had to apply to be a host organization, and we had to essentially pitch a project for a fellow to do. Our fellow will be helping us do a deep dive on understanding our vulnerability to extreme heat, and again, planning out what priority actions are of what we can do to address it. So we were approved as a host organization back in November. We interviewed fellows just a month or so ago. The woman we've selected is incredibly accomplished, Clara McCarthy. She's coming to us from Emory University, where she's transitioning from a bachelor's degree in environmental science into their master's of public health program. So we're really excited that Clara will be coming on board, again, to help us move the needle forward on our planning around extreme heats. I did want to also mention, so some of the work that Clara will be doing will help us gain points for our Sustainable Connecticut Certification, so that's also something that I am helping manage now that I'm here, is our continued good standing and certification in that program. And I believe this is my last slide, just wanted to mention doing a couple of different things as it relates to energy efficiency. So the town previously had had a number of projects done, two greenhouse gas inventories, an energy action plan developed in 2013, and so kind of learning that history of all of the work that's been done and figuring out where we can go forward with it. One of the partnerships we're taking advantage of is that Eversource has a relationship with UConn, Dr. Amy Thompson, where she and her students will provide a lot of capacity to local governments to help them get their energy benchmarking done. So energy benchmarking is when you essentially, you study so that you can track the energy used by your buildings over time. So there's a program online called EPA Portfolio Manager. Very fortunately, most of our buildings were already in the portfolio, thanks to a fellow that was hosted back in 2018, but Dr. Thompson's lab is helping us get back up to date with that. And even though it's a partnership through Eversource, they're also able to help us make sure that we're getting all of our information input from our GRAD utilities accounts as well. So once we have that, we'll have a system that we can track over time, again, to look at our municipal building energy usage, and it also allows you to set goals and see the impacts firsthand if you do energy reduction efficiency projects. Hopefully, as your usage goes down, you have a way to track that. And so all that goes into helping us prepare for, you know, additional funding projects and programs. There is some formula funding coming down the pipe through the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant that we're looking at really closely, and thinking about, again, how we can develop energy strategies, set some goals, and really get the town on a path committed to lessening our greenhouse gas emissions. And with that, again, thank you so much for your time this evening.
Thank you. Well, welcome. I've heard nothing but great things over the last few months about the work you're doing, and it's really nice to see all that you've been up to, and it's true that we're lucky to have you. So thank you for that presentation, and we'll now open up to questions from the council. Let's see. Councilboard along?
Thank you. Really excited to have you on board. This is something I'm very passionate about, our environment. I love the fact that you're already reaching out to UNH and bringing, you know, different folks in to kind of help learn, and you're jumping right in with the youth, and, you know, I think it is important, as you stated, to really bring them on board, and I feel like there has been a gap in that learning, you know? When I was growing up, it was that reduce, reuse, recycle that they drilled in our head over and over, and then it kind of like has died out. And so they're really that education piece of what you can do here. I'm very excited that you're looking at the Paquana Plains area, and in particular, looking at the Paquana Village Homes in that area, PQ as they call it. Definitely, folks have reached out to me over the years, and the amount of water, there's no basement that they're like, when the storm comes in, in certain sections, the groundwater is just kind of coming right up. So I hope that that's going to extend over into that residential area, as well as looking at the, you know, ground fields that are close to, that we have identified in our town that are not been remediated, close to our drinking water supply, ways that we can kind of work towards, you know, protecting, protecting our watershed here are very important to me long-term, and looking at the environment. So I'm really excited to have you on board, and I look forward to collaborating and seeing all the great work, and it sounds like you've been extremely busy, and really excited to have you here, and thank you for all your great work so far. Thank you.
Council Jones?
Thank you, and thank you very much for coming and the presentation. I also echo the Paquana Plains Park. I walk there a lot, and you have to step around the mud quite a bit in that lower corner, so it'd be, it'd be exciting to see what you can do with all that excess water that's sort of flowing through there. I'm also a member of GOSA, an active part of their sustainability crew, and so they are incredibly excited about their opportunities with the Groton school system, and it's great that you're a part of that, because they've just opened up huge opportunities for the students to learn, and when they take out groups, they don't take out 10 or 20, they take out 70 at a time. They're just overflowed, and parents are coming along too, so I think that's, if you can incorporate into that, it's great. Could you just give a couple examples, when you said, I know you have incoming resiliency recommendations that are coming, could you just give a couple examples of what you mean by resiliency recommendations?
Yeah, certainly. Thank you for that. So as I mentioned on my last slide, the Energy Efficiency Conservation Block Grant is, so we're eligible for formula funding through that. It used to just be a competitive grant program, but they got influx of dollars through the federal programs. And one of the requirements for that program, though, is that a town either already hasn't submit, or uses a portion of their formula funding to develop an energy action strategy, and that strategy needs to have goals. So, you know, that's going to be an example of something that we'll be looking to get your all's input on, on how we move forward with developing that. The climate action plan as well, that will include a vulnerability assessment of the entire town, developing really key recommendations for how we help the town become more resilient and sustainable, and so that's also something that we would seek your all's input on.
So do you mean by resiliency flooding that might come into downtown Mystic, when we have a, you know, a super tide or something like that, and how you deal with it, or the edge of the coast being worn away by storms? Is that some of the recommendations you would give of how to deal with that?
Yeah, correct. So we'll be looking at climate hazards ranging from, like you mentioned, coastal flooding, tidal flooding, through precipitation, when you have those really large storms, issues that you have not only with storm our systems being overflowed, but potentially wind damage as well, all the way to droughts, right? We're, we're less than a year past having a major drought last summer, so how we prepare to deal with drought situations, extreme heats, large storms, nor'easters, hurricanes, all of those larger storms that are becoming even more potent when they make landfall. So across all of those hazards, having to understand how we're vulnerable to them, and then figuring out, right, are there things that we can help do to protect ourselves moving forward against them?
Do you have sort of a timeframe when some of this, when you're going to start releasing some of this information?
For the climate action plan?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, we were hoping originally, DEEP had said that we should hear by the end of March on the funding proposal that we submitted. I heard yesterday that it's probably going to be an additional month out. So once we hear from that, we'll be coming back to you all, and we'll give an update at that point.
All right. Looking forward to it. Thank you.
Councilor Garcia.
Thank you. Thank you so much for being here, and thank you for being here for Groton. Can you just go over what you were talking about with the Sustainable Connecticut Certification, what that is?
Certainly. So that is a program that Groton has been, we've been certified through twice, and essentially, it's a points-based system. So in order to become certified, you have to complete a certain number of points. They give you a rubric of over 300 actions that you can do to gain those points, and you have to hit a certain benchmark to be certified, and then there's three different tiers of certification. So like I mentioned, Groton has been participating in this program for a number of years. We've been certified twice, and our next certification is up in December of 2024.
And what kind of tier are we at for certification?
We're at the bronze level, which is the, there's three levels. It starts bronze, silver, and then gold.
Okay. Are we going to try and reach a gold certification at some point, or are we looking at just a bronze?
No, I mean, I always go into things seeing the maximum that we can do. So I don't think that we're just hoping to just make it over bronze and then walk away. If it seems like the actions are things that align with what makes sense based on the work the department's doing and the partnerships we have in place, we would definitely go after additional points.
Is there any benefits to going up to a higher tier for the town?
At this point in time, I don't think there's any additional points in grants or things along those lines. It's more basically a status that you, you're meeting certain goals when it comes to sustainability and resiliency within a community. Over time, we do expect that to be utilized more when the state's looking at how they're handing out funding for things along those lines, but it's still a very early program.
Got it. I was wondering if it correlated with grants at all.
And it is quite time-intensive to get those certifications, so it's not just, hey, we show them that we're doing this and this, and we get points, and we get applied. It was a lot of work both times through the original certification, the recertification, but if there's items, again, as Megan had said, that we are doing that align with our goals and programs that we're reaching towards or want to get to, we're going to do the best that we can.
Great, and thank you for keeping us up that status.
Councilor Jacob.
Thank you, Mayor. Megan, it's nice meeting you. I met you actually at the Pollinera Pathways, I believe, and that was an interesting course, informational session, both about plants and pollination, so I appreciate that. Do you see a lot of money out there in grants for sustainability, climate resiliency?
Yes.
You do? Okay. And have you worked with our both state and federal delegation, would you work in for support letters to make sure that we're backed as fully as possible when applying for these grants?
Yeah, with only having submitted the two grant proposals yet, it's not been, it's something that, you know, it was a state grant, excuse me, a state fund. We didn't go after delegate support letters, but I am aware of the pathways, and I attended some of the sessions they had just a couple months ago about special appropriations and things, so those are pathways that we're looking into as well.
Yeah, I think we should do whatever we can possible for, to bring ourselves above bronze, and I know you'll do that, so I'm looking forward to that, especially being so close to the coast ourselves. And if you can just keep us, the council, updated on the events, I'd love to attend. Thank you.
Thanks.
Councilor McBride?
Thank you. Great presentation. Thank you, and welcome to Groton, I guess. Just one, one quick question.
Thank you. Great presentation. Thank you and welcome to Groton, I guess. Just one quick question. River Road, we get, you know, questions. We check it out all the time. There's huge issues. They're not looking for a question or answer today, but if you can at some point update the council on what, if anything, can be done to address the situation there, we would appreciate it. So, look forward to that in the future.
Certainly. Thanks.
Council Franklin?
Thank you. So, when do you think in a timeline, well, anyway, welcome, thanks for being here and welcome to Groton. And, but my question is, when do you think you might have a timeline to have a plan in place for Groton? For, you know, how to combat the flooding or hurricanes and how we can bounce back quickly from them? I mean, like, there's got to be a plan for this. And so, I'm just sort of wondering, as a town-wide plan?
Yeah, and that's really that Climate Action Plan effort I mentioned. So, we will make a decision on how we're moving forward. And likely April, when we hear about that grant funding, we have contingency plans in place. So, I think regardless, we're going to start moving forward with it this year. So, we'll start to put together scopes of work and request for proposals, get a contractual firm on board. And that would probably bring us towards the end of this year. And the next year would really be digging into the development of the plan, all the community outreach. So, I'm hopeful within a year and a half.
And also, right now, we do have a hazard mitigation plan that is in place. In addition to that, we've been working with the COG, the Council of Governments. They are revising and updating the hazard mitigation plan. They're also adding some new elements to that, dealing with climate change, sea level rise. So, that's one piece that's starting to help move this along. There's also the Mystic specific plan that we're working on right now. But that Climate Action Plan that Megan mentioned is really going to be much more inclusive. We really want to focus a lot on outreach and getting a much larger amount of participation from the community in that. And it'll build upon all the previous work efforts that we've done.
Right. Because, I mean, there's Mystic and I understand you are working on that at the moment. But there's also, like, we have Noank and Quonic Bridge. And as you go down South Road, I mean, there is like, there are areas there that flood like routinely and regularly. And you can count on it. And you just know to be careful to go through there because of it. So, it's not just simply, you know, like Paquonic Plains, the park. I mean, the park, in my perspective, would not be as higher priority as our main roadways or neighborhoods, you know, where people are living. But I'm just curious as to like the timeline so that we know, like, because from what I'm understanding, when it came to us for your position, to pass your position, it was to be able to do this, you're going to have a plan. And then, you'd go out and seek these grants and try and mitigate these problems with, you know, all the grants that you would have the capability of getting. So, that's what I'm looking forward to you working on and trying to have, so that Groton, if we do have, you know, big storms or disasters of, you know, these types that we've been discussing, that we can rebound from them quickly. And I believe that that was part of the resiliency part of this, is how do we get back to where we were quickly when we have to deal with this stuff? So, I look forward to seeing what you have to do and thank you and welcome to Groton.
Thank you.
Council Westerville?
Thank you very much. Congratulations and welcome aboard. Thank you very much. That was a great presentation and I look forward to working with you in the future on this. Thank you.
Council Board Leader?
I forgot one thing. I apologize. Some folks had reached out to me about their groundwater and their wells contaminated. And I know down where our town dump is, I believe, I don't know, John, the water there is not drinkable. Is that correct, in that whole area?
I'm not sure what the condition is.
Yeah, I believe there's contamination out there. And there are folks that do not have public access to water in our town. And I know that, for example, our building, that is our central office for Groton Public Schools, they bring in drink, you know, water to that building because it's well out there as well and it's not drinkable. So, there has been people that have reached out to me in the past about how maybe you would play a role in maybe identifying or seeing where, because until the infrastructure makes it out into these areas, how do we prevent future contamination of our drinking water, which to me is our lifeline? I mean, you've got to have access to fresh, potable water. And, you know, when a storm is done passing through, the contamination of these wells is also a concern. So, folks that do not have the infrastructure currently set up are very concerned because they lose their drinking water. And more education around proper testing and how they can get testing. I think some folks seem unclear and some have never really had wells before. So, more of that education could be quite helpful, but I'm not sure if that's something that, you know, you're able to address. That's why I wanted to ask.
Yeah, it's definitely something that we can look into. I hadn't heard much about specifically the issue of drinking water contamination, so I appreciate you bringing it to my attention.
Yeah, thank you. That definitely is, especially when folks have no other means because the infrastructure has not been set up to get out to them. So, I think that would be. And some more around our dump, our landfill, like, what's the soils, what's going on over there? You know, where's that running off to and where? You know, it's really not that far from our reservoir in retrospect. What are we doing to contain it? You know, some of the stuff that's there, we can't change. But we can change how we treat the area by planting barriers and different things that would help the soils from becoming further contaminated at a greater rate beyond the dump. I would love to kind of get in some of that research. And because it is around a neighborhood and the way it slopes off, it could run. So, it would be good to know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I have a point of information?
Sure.
Can I have, can you cite your source on where the contaminated water is?
No, that's not going to be a point of information. No. All right. Is there any other discussion? Okay, seeing none. Well, thank you for being here. Thank you for updating us on everything you're doing. We look forward to, you know, hearing from you in the future.
Thank you all.
Can I have a break, please?
Sure. We'll stand in recess at 8:27.
Council's back from recess at 8:44. And we are on to the update on excess property redevelopment. We've got Director Reiner and Bronk here first, an update, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I think last few council meetings, different properties, some of the excess properties that we have, we've either come to you to talk to them on some specific updates, whether it was Gold Star Highway and Colonel Ledyard, and then other council meetings, I think some folks have brought up, hey, we just want an update on what is happening with some of these different properties that we had spoken about before, that we've taken through a process to get redeveloped, or some of these that we've taken through that process, gotten all the approvals in place to actually dispose of it, and then things either did or didn't work out, and just wanted to kind of talk to the council about that, and talk next steps, and make sure you're aware that the ball is in your court on a few of these too. So I think, you know, as a reminder, just to all of you, and to the general public when we talk about this, that there is an extensive approval process that's required by numerous boards, commissions, town-elected bodies, prior to the approval of a sale, and the eventual redevelopment of said property. A lot of instances where even if we take something through the entire town council and RTM process to approve to dispose of the property, well, that's the end of one process, but then it's the beginning of another, and then it's the beginning of the redevelopment process through the Planning and Zoning Commission, and any other inland wetlands or other boards or commissions that would have to review it. And most of these properties that we're looking at, in order for it to get to from concept of, hey, this is an excess property, we want to sell it, to the council and RTM approving just the sale of that property, it takes around 14 public meetings just to get there. So I just want to put that on everybody's radar of how much in our current process that happened. So tonight, I wanted to give a brief update on a number of properties. 529 Gold Star Highway, which we spoke about just recently, the former Sealy School, the former Colonel Ledyard School, former Groton Heights Elementary School, former Pleasant Valley School, 1208 aquatic road, as well as the former SB Butler School. So the Gold Star Highway property, that was a property that we gained ownership through tax foreclosure, and at one of our more recent meetings, we had taken forward the extension of that option agreement. So that option agreement is renewed for another 18 months, and we expect to see the developer back before sometime in the near future to talk about development partners, and how that'll move forward through the process. The former, and each of these, we can kind of circle back, I'll kind of give an overview of each, and happy to answer any questions. The former Sealy School, which is formerly owned by Groton, has been purchased by Donmar Corporation, and is now known as Triton Square Development. That was approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission for 304 residential multifamily housing units. After the approval by both Inland Wetlands and the Planning and Zoning Commission, an appeal was taken on that property by a butter. That has been through the court system. It went through a hearing, and we are waiting on a decision. It could be any week, it could be any month, sometimes these things in the court system just take a little bit of time, and that'll move on from there. The former Colonel Ledyard School, they did submit just this week, it might even have been yesterday, to the city's Planning and Zoning Commission to move that application forward. That was looking at 64 residential house, multifamily units on that property in total. The former Groton Heights Elementary School, so this was a property that the town council and RTM did move forward through the process to dispose of. We had been working with Thayer Mahan on them utilizing this property for basically their location of their world headquarters. Then COVID hit, and as they were exploring the property additionally, they realized that there was a lot more environmental contamination on the property. They also recently had the opportunity to acquire the building and the rest of the building that they're located in, and they also said that they wanted to focus more on their business and the growth of their business, as opposed to taking the redevelopment of Brownfield's property through the development process. So they said, thank you, we appreciate all the help, but we're going to step away from the Groton Heights school redevelopment project. So at that time, or so at this time, that's one of those properties that the town has approved for the disposal of it, to sell the property, but we don't have somebody waiting in the wing, so to say, but as soon as that newspaper article hit the press, we were getting inundated with phone calls of, how much do you want for it? I'll write a check. We want it. Developers are knocking on the door that want that property, as well as some of the other properties that we still have that don't have a preferred developer interest on that property. And that leads right into the former Pleasant Valley, the former Pleasant Valley School. That was a piece of property we did take through the full disposition process. We took it through RFP. We had a preferred developer, and they backed out. And right around that time is when the council said, all right, let's kind of put the brakes on things and hold, we want to revisit our process. But since that time, every week, we get a call from a developer, looking for, hey, I've heard you have this great school, we have a use for it, we want to do something for it, and we're just, hey, we'll take your name and information, and we'll let you know when there's going to be a process for an RFP, or if the town decides what they want to do with the property in the future. But right now, that's another one, the ball is in your court, to give us direction on how you want to move forward. I should also say that we didn't, we did apply for that community investment fund grant from the Connecticut DECD. We did not receive funding for that. They didn't give us any feedback yet of why we didn't receive the funding. That's something we're trying to reach out to them. There was some overall feedback on some of the proposals, but I think if we had a more solid either development partner on it, or a little bit of a clearer plan on how we were going to move forward, that probably would have helped us getting some funding for the demolition remediation of that particular property. Again, ball's in your court on Pleasant Valley and on Groton Heights. The next one down the line, 1208 Aquatic Road, that's the former gas station to Brownfield sites. We've applied for two different types of Brownfield funding for that. We haven't received any funding for it. It's still something that we're looking into, but that one's kind of just waiting for what our next steps are. And then kind of lastly, the former SB Butler School. We have not really done much with that one. We've gotten no direction from the council. That's not something we've really done a lot of work on at this point in time. And I just do have to mention, and I know I've said it a number of times, we's, and you know, tonight we heard about what's happening with the Claude Chester School, or some potential plans for that site in the fields, but we get a lot of inquiries about that site also, for mixed juice, mixed income type of, you know, development, because it's in such a great location. So there's a lot of need, desire for housing and other development in Groton. We don't have a ton of vacant sites. Many of our existing sites that we've been focusing on for a long time, and our redevelopment corridors that are held by private parties and private partners, there's, we get to bring them along too, on if they want to redevelop their land, but there's a lot of assets that we have that there's a lot of interest from some of our public partners, as well as some of our private partners. I don't know if there's any more you want to offer?
Just to reiterate the development interest, and what we do at this moment, we've been building a listing for years. We add all the development interest to our developer list. That list has grown significantly over the past few months. I think, I would say the one catalyst, or two maybe, we're out of COVID, but people are looking for opportunities in all of the electric boat PR, and particularly when people were hearing that Electric Boat was interested in being a partner in developing housing, we're getting contacted, I would say, every other day by a new developer interest, and we basically have to put them on hold. The best we can do is say, we'll put you on the listing. Some of them actually will desire to come to town and meet with us, or we do a Zoom, but we're having a significant number of developers approach Groton.
And we do direct them to other private properties that we know that are on the market, that people have expressed interest in selling, and other private development interests, but the public ones are some ones that we have some influence on, and wanted to give you an update on where those are. Happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you for that presentation. Are there any questions from the council? Counsel Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know where the 1208 aquatic road, is that across from the fire station? I don't know where that is.
From the old fire station, it is adjacent to the old massage school. It's near where the old Almac's used to be, next to the old, no. So the massage school that the Rogers Development just built out into some housing.
Into apartments.
Into apartments. So if that were the massage school, if you're looking at it, you're heading, you know, west, just to the east of that, there's a vacant piece of property there that we own. That's about an acre in size. It used to be a gas station, has some groundwater pollution on it. We need to do some cleanup. We've spoken before that we have in a butter that's interested in that, and incorporating that into part of their development more as an amenity for the area.
Is it that parking lot that's?
No, it's not a parking lot right now, it's just kind of like a gravel, grassy area.
Getting towards Groton Utilities Property, it sets back, and it's a vegetated area.
Okay, so it's right in, it's about an acre. So the thing that you're waiting for is this reuse policy, right? Once this is done, then you will be able to move forward? Is that correct?
With direction from the council, yes.
But you need, but you need this.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Counsel Bortles?
Thank you. My understanding, though, there was never a hold that was put on, John, did you put a hold on contacting RFP Developments and everything? Because my understanding was that it was gonna, there was no hold to the town while a RFP process was being drafted. That was some decision that maybe you guys have made, but that wasn't a direction from the council. You know, development and things could still come before us. There was no hold, that's my question.
I believe there was a hold. That was a direction from the town council, that the policy was to be updated before we entered into a new RFP process.
Right, but there still should have been like development updates and things like that. I mean, obviously, if there was things going on, but I just want to, anyway, just seems a little.
And every month in the economic development report, which gets put in the council's packet, there's an update on every single one of these parcels?
Yeah, thanks for that. So, so my question is, on the 1208, we still, you said there's still no grants. Have we reached out in any other capacity to see exactly, because this has been sitting, how many years has it been sitting for the Phase Two? Like 20, 30, like long time?
Longer than I've been here.
Yeah, and I think that was something that I had brought up a while back, asking about the location of Brownfields, and then we, so I just, I think it's just important, have we identified any other Brownfields that we own?
I believe the manager sent you a list of that.
It's been a while, there wasn't much on it, but.
Yeah, within the last six months or so, something was sent to the council.
Perfect.
It's been a little longer than that, but yeah.
Okay.
And, let me just see. Yeah, that's my only, I mean, the other schools I've been pretty much updated on as we've gone through, so a lot of them have just been waiting. The one that you spoke, that we're still waiting for the attorney, what did you say before that, that was going on with that, again?
Which?
You're waiting on the Triton one, you said it couldn't move because there's a decision that was being made.
By the court system.
Yeah, what was, can you say what you said before that, because I missed that part in my notes?
That we're waiting for a decision from the courts?
Yeah, what was going on with it?
There was an appeal on the decision.
Zoning decision.
Zoning by a resident?
The Planning and Zoning Commission approved the development of the site, and then in a butter, appealed that decision.
Thank you. All right, thank you.
Thank you, and just to note, Counsel Parker joined us at 8:55. Counsel Franco?
Thanks. So I was absolutely under the impression that we were on a standstill until the reuse committee got back to us with their updates to the document we gave them. And anytime somebody asks me, I say, we're waiting for that to come back, so we could, the council can make a decision before we could decide what we're doing with any of this property. And that's why we were, like, I personally was very leery about a grant for Pleasant, I think it was Pleasant Valley, is Pleasant Valley going on a grant?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, a grant for Pleasant Valley, simply because you're making notation on a future RFP, when we don't have a plan in place right now. And so, thank you for the update, and it has been a long wait for the reuse presentation, and can't wait to get this back to the council so we can figure it out. So as a community, we can have some more public hearings on these properties, and see what the community might want, and then go forward with an RFP process. Thank you. And then go forward with an RFP process. Thank you.
Counsel Casiri?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so just to be clear, we have two properties right now that developers are actively calling and they, they are seeking to develop right now, correct? Pleasant Valley and Groton Heights.
Correct. I'd say those are the two we get the most interest on.
Would you say it's kind of increased since the electric boat announcement?
Tremendously.
Okay. So this is kind of a new thing that's happening with the, the desire for these properties.
Tomorrow morning, we have a Zoom with one developer in, in the afternoon, a meeting with another developer and his team that are interested in properties here. And we talk about these properties. So we haven't stopped talking about these properties and getting the word out. We just can't really market them actively because there's no end, okay, next, what happens next? Because we don't have an RFP to release or a, a direction on what the future use for the properties are.
Understood. And you have mentioned in several meetings, because I've been here, that we are actively waiting on this policy. So I just want to make that clear. Also, uh, would you say it's fair to say that because it's so desirable right now that we potentially will have more options for our community members to kind of get more of what they're seeking?
I, I do believe so, yes.
Okay.
And I, I don't want to underestimate, um, the former SB Butler School. We've had a lot of interest from people, um, again, I think it came up at the last presentation by the Groton Housing Authority of some things that they thought they could do there. Developers that have talked to us about, you know, cottage style housing, something that would fit within the character of the neighborhood. A lot of interest in that site too, because of the possibilities there. But that one, uh, we really haven't put anything out there because again, uh, looking for direction from the council and what the town wants to do with each of these properties.
I have a different colored highlighted star there for the SB Butler property. So I was getting there.
Oh, okay.
My next question was going to be potentially any of these properties that are available. We could put affordable housing on these properties, correct?
Oh, definitely.
And that these could be potential for the, the mixed income use that we've been talking about and that, you know, we, we're kind of hearing that we need. And also we need more affordable housing in Groton. So any of these properties potentially could, could fit that need, correct?
Oh, definitely, definitely. And how, whether we did it with a public, public partnership with the housing authority, whether we did a public-private partnership with another developer. If the town is looking for 25% of the units to be affordable in all these excess property developments. All we need to do is put that in the RFP, that the minimum is X. And then what else do we want? We want a playground. We want whatever components. If we are very clear about what our end product and goals are of what we're looking for. That's what we can get through any type of a process. As opposed to if, if the goal is maximizing housing and increasing the grand list. Okay. Well, that, that's a little bit of a different goal, but we want to be clear about what it is we as a town want.
But potentially because it's so desirable right now, we could get a little bit of everything that we need?
I think we could.
Do you think that the longer that we wait for this policy, the more we're going to see people kind of drop off and our options will be limited?
Right now, uh, developers are looking in surrounding municipalities because there's more available land. And, you know, hence why we have, you know, I think every year the, you know, you've heard Paige and I talk too many times about the 26,000 jobs in Groton, which that number is probably going up thanks to EB. And originally was 80% of the workforce, then it was 81%. I think it's probably closer to 82 or 83% of the workforce now commutes to Groton.
And also these other municipalities are not waiting on a, on a policy to, in order to be able to develop some of their excess properties. So, thank you.
Counsel McBride?
Thank you. To infer that we're not moving forward with development because of this committee is fallacious. You can develop land. It takes years to develop relationships with developers. So that is just entirely incorrect. A couple of questions and comments. The, the Groton grand list, if you exclude the revale two years ago, has been negative for nine years. So to, has been negative, average growth for nine years. So to explain that the reason we're delayed is because this RFP process is completely ridiculous. With that being said, we'll, we'll present some information that we think can help things move, move things forward after this presentation. But it takes years to do this. As an example, Groton Heights Elementary School, does anyone know when that closed?
2007.
Thank you. How about Pleasant Valley?
Is that around 16 or so?
I was here, it was probably late 17, early 18.
Former Sealy School?
I think shortly before I got here.
I think before 2010, there about.
Well, it was, it was used for a parks and rec prior to that.
So my point is although this committee has taken its time and it's going on nine months and we're moving into some different directions at the expertise of the individuals on the group, on the committee, to imply that we're delaying the process is, is ridiculous. Thank you.
Counsel Franco?
Thank you. So as I've been on the council for five years, prior to us, we didn't do anything with any of these school properties. So we had a process. Um, it was, had some flaws in it. And, but we got some things done. We got some RFPs out there. We got plenty of responses on some of these. We had, um, a few of them fall through as has been expected with some development. But, um, prior to, I'd say maybe four to five years ago, nobody did anything with those properties until, um, the council took it up. So, um, but actually probably for the past year, we've been on hold. So what has it been? Four years of work and, and getting things coming in, RFPs and such, and then a year of nothing. So I think it is a delay and I can't wait to get onto the next topic. So I would appreciate it if we move forward and if anybody wants to try and call me a liar of any sort. We can have a separate discussion about that.
Counsel Borlon?
Um, thank you. I remember quite frankly, when I got appointed to Phil David Atwater's seat. I met with the town manager, Patrice Kunitowski in his office. And, uh, at that time, the page was what, half a sheet, John? At the time it was, um, I had asked when I got on overwhelmingly at that time, people were concerned. Buildings were sitting for about 10, 15 years, some of them, 20 properties, school buildings. And at that time, there was no process in place and to how a school turns it over. Myself, Manager Burke, Patrice Kunitowski sat, I was on that first group. And we had five little, little notes and we added on there, decorum please. Five little notes on there. And when we asked, what do we do when a town, uh, when the town building is done in a school? John looked at us and said, well, there's no process here. So we had a contact and meet with the school that was involved. And we said, you know, within so many days, you got to turn the keys over. That's, that's, that's how far back it goes with, with like baby steps. There was no process and, oh, they still have desks in there. They haven't cleaned it out. Well, when are they going to clean it out? Stuff was sitting for years, way prior to you guys coming, way prior, prior to John Burke getting on, way prior to me becoming elected. There was no turnover in an efficient manner in the cutoff process. Do you remember that meeting, John, when we had with Patrice Kunitowski?
Yes.
Yeah. And that's, and what we have here, which I have a copy that someone requested sent, this was then revised a little bit more. We didn't have to create an RFP process or a group. This is something that the town staff could have generated on their own at the request. Yes, proposals have come through, like the Mystic Oral School. Overwhelmingly, we're going to probably be paying tons of money as a result of that because of the process needed work. It's no, no problem. It's no insult. It's the process. In comparison to surrounding towns, we, this little paper that we have with these little steps that we only recently added. Prior to this, it was only five little steps. There was work to be done. So I, again, to say that we're holding it up, if there's a property ready to be developed, bring it forward and let's talk about it and go through the process. But I, you know, over, we all agreed to refine the process at the, at the, at the concern of the community. The town had every right to rewrite a process and submit to the council any step of the way forward. Way before all of this, before Mystic Oral School and thereafter. Nothing was to be generated. Thank you.
Point of information?
What's your point of information?
Was there a process written that was ready to be voted on?
And at the end of the last council, yes, we had a, we had a written document that the council decided not to act on and leave it to the next council. That came from town staff. Yes, you're correct. Counsel Casiri?
Thank you. So you're receiving phone calls right now? And you're putting people on a list because you are in a pause right now, correct?
Correct. Because we're, we've been instructed not to issue any more RFPs.
Correct. And you've been instructed by the town council to not issue any more RFPs, correct? Thank you. Um, and because you're waiting on this policy, you, you obviously are not seeking direction from the town council, which is the elected body of this town, because you're waiting for this policy. So there's no point in getting direction from us about where we want to go with the RFP process because you're waiting for this policy, correct?
Correct.
John Burke, do you agree with this?
Yes, that's the current marching orders from the council.
Thank you very much.
Any further discussion? Counsel McBride?
Just for clarification, you are continually having discussions with developers all during the past nine months.
Yes.
So nothing has slowed down other than the issuance of an RFP, correct? You're still in constant contact with developers. You're seek, seeking development opportunities. People are contacting you. No, none of that process has been delayed. It's only the RFP that comes at the culmination of making a deal.
I, I think there's an overuse of the term RFP. RFP stands for Request for Proposals. It's an instrument that occurs after marketing. We have been unable to market the properties, which actually has caused delays. We have individuals that come to us and the best we can do is talk about the properties, put them on a list. But they're in a holding pattern. There's no ability for them to actually provide us a proposal and give it to the council. So there has been a delay.
Well, you have been attending seminars and conferences and marketing Groton's properties throughout the past nine months.
We are marketing Groton as a whole. We're not necessarily marketing these specific properties because we don't know what your marching orders are for these properties.
But when you market Groton. Properties, any and all properties will include in our portfolio. But when a developer actually says, I want this one, we have to tell them, we're not prepared to move through that process. We're in a holding pattern.
And based on your professional experience, how many years does it take by the time you meet a developer, by the time you finish an RFP?
The, again, the RFP is the instrument that culminates the marketing. Marketing usually takes about six months. You issue the RFP, you go through a process involving several months. You know, I, I think that overall process from beginning to end, you're talking, you're talking maybe a year and a half to two years.
Okay. So you, you had said six months. So the reality is the nine months that this RFP process has been being reviewed has potentially maximally maxed out the delay by three months.
I'm not sure how that's calculated.
You said it take, you market for six months.
We haven't been doing marketing.
What do you, aren't you doing that at these events?
We go to the events, but as I said, when people ask us, the marketing includes doing showings and also carry. They, they will actually begin to do some of their planning, uh, before an RFP is issued. RFP is not issued until we get a number of developers who are actually interested, who have done their due diligence to a certain point. Then we issue the RFP. They only have usually 45 to 60 days to respond. That's not enough time for a new developer to enter the picture and respond. They have to basically pick up momentum through that process and respond to the RFP.
Okay. But you're still in contact with developers and they're aware of the properties.
We're having general conversations with opportunities, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And, and these developers now, if opportunities are not here, we're on their radar, we're on their, their list. But they're then going investing their money in other places.
Well, developers usually take months and months and months and sometimes years to actually invest the money. They don't turn around and park down millions of dollars in six months' time.
No, but we've been talking about a number of these school properties for years. So I, I've been working for the town for about eight and a half years now. And very early on, when I started, the council, um, told me, we need to get these vacant school properties, which are not on the grand list, which are collecting dust, marketed, we need development there. And I explained to the council, the first thing we need to do is understand what the market is in town. And we did a townwide market analysis. We then did economic development infrastructure and we did a lot of marketing for years about Groton and a number of these properties. And that's how we were able to turn things over like the Sealy School. And we had interest in some of these other properties. So we've been doing marketing for some time as Groton as a whole and some of these properties for a number of years.
All right. So you have been marketing, you have been doing RFPs for all of these properties, but they have yet to be developed, right? The ones we're talking about that you just presented. So I just find, again, I'm all for economic development. I'm all for what your department does. So I'm not trying to speak negatively because that's not my purpose. My purpose is I'm trying to defend the actions of this committee that's put in time and effort to do this process because we are in effect getting blamed for, or it seems like we're getting blamed for inaction for nine months of a process that we reviewed in great detail. So I'm all for moving forward and that's what we hopefully will present tonight and help your departments move forward too. I just don't think it's fair to say the reason these properties aren't developed is because of this property reuse. Because you stated 2010, 2007, 2017, that is, there's, there's no way this property reuse committee should be blamed for not being able to develop those properties. There was a delay certainly because we're doing this, but I think we all should get on the same page and move forward and move forward with the RFP process, move forward with other things. But in no way, shape or form should this committee be blamed for things that have been out there for 10 or 15 years.
I wasn't putting blame on.
No, I'm not blaming you. I'm saying there were some inferences made that the reason these aren't developed is because the, the committee hasn't finalized their plans. And I don't think that's fair nor accurate.
Counsel, I, I want to weigh in. I, I, I think that's, that's accurate, you know? There was a significant delay for years as to why many of Groton's properties are not developed. However, most recently, um, I think that's what we're talking about, the, the past year or so. Case in point, Pleasant Valley School, when the preferred developer decided not to do the project. There were others that were ready to go and they asked us, why can't we move forward? And the answer was that there was going to be a new process developed and things were, were going to hold for a while.
No, and I, I understand that. I'm just trying to clarify that, uh, the inference is made that this committee is causing all these schools not to be developed is incorrect. And hopefully what we're presenting next will help solve kind of the misunderstanding that appears to be out there. But thank you for everything you do.
I have a point of information.
What's your point of information?
Um, Noank, uh, my question is about Noank, uh, School of Noank Garden. I know that was not slated to be developed in like a building, but should that be on here? Where, where do we stand on that property? Is that one?
That's more of a parks and rec. Now, we're the lead on that, yes. And, um, you know, we had our, uh, we received a site plan, you know, approval for that site. Mark's actually going to be presenting, um, you know, to start funding some of the things there. So you'll hear about it in the next couple of weeks.
So it wouldn't fall under this list?
Right. It's not off this, on this case anymore. It's not considered an economic development project.
Thank you. Uh, Counsel Jacome?
Thank you. I'm thinking, Mayor. Uh, mine's just a very quick statement. I think it seems like, uh, there's reasonable points from all the counselors that you, that there's been informal conversations to a certain extent with developers, correct? But based on not having the RFP policy, not to blame anybody, there is some sort of delay. Would you say that, correct?
Right. Developers don't really understand public process that well. They, they think they do. But literally, they think they could buy the property immediately. And we have to go through a procurement process. So they say, okay, fine. What do I need to do to actually throw my name in that? It's typically an RFP and we're not yet able to issue the RFP because of, um, the, the revamping of the process.
No, I think we've heard from all the counselors here. Uh, there's some good points. All right. Um, just keep it simple. Thank you.
Point of information?
What's your point of information?
I'm sorry, to clarify.
I believe I can be recognized by one of the councilors, just to clarify.
Point of order.
No.
Point of order.
No.
Point of order.
Point of order.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. So I'm sorry. I will ask those in attendance not to speak out loud.
We worked on three different schools.
I'm sorry.
Point of order.
I'm sorry, I will ask those in attendance not to speak.
Point of order.
Okay, the council is standing...
We're on a recess.
...at nine nineteen. Council's back from recess at nine twenty-six. Counselor Casiri?
Thank you, it was a point of information. So, just to be, to clear, to clarify, you cannot market these individual properties because you need individual direction from the council for each individual property, correct?
So, we market the town, and we, as Mr. Bronn said, we include these properties in our portfolio, but when developers ask for more information, we tell them we're waiting on a revised RFP policy.
Correct. So you can't go and say, "Well, we've got a direction from the council on the former Pleasant Valley School," because there's no direction from the council because you're waiting for this policy, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. So, I'm just going to speak briefly here, okay? Just the way that I remember it, okay? The town staff came to the council, the last council, at the end of the last council, with a document saying, "This is a revised RFP process, I don't, for lack of a better term. This is a revised process that we can use to market and sell." That council decided to not act on that and let it go to this council, okay? This council decided that we were going to set up a committee to do that work, and in order to get a better process, to get input from the community and get it all done, okay? Now, it has taken, I don't know, how long? Nine months. I wasn't under the expectation that we were going to give it to them and they would come back in two months. I wasn't, okay? I was under the expectation, they were going to do the work, it was going to take as long as it was necessary, and I trust the work that they're doing. I don't think that they should be blamed for the amount of time that it's taken, okay? We understand that there's properties out there, the market is hot, we want to sell now, okay? But, to blame the committee that we set up by the council is, in my opinion, not the correct position to take. Now, that being said, there's other comments that have been made about the town staff should have done this and brought something to us before, and we wouldn't even be in this position. Well, my recollection is they did, and this council, well, the previous council, decided to not act on it and do this instead. So, everything that has come, the situation we're in, this is all council decisions, that's how we got here, okay? So, and majority votes, I'm pretty sure unanimous votes. So, that's why we're here, where we are, and everyone just needs to accept that, and we need to move forward and get this done. Because going back and forth and blaming this person or that person, not productive at all. So, that's all I have to say. I have Counselor Jones, Counselor Jones next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just have a question. This is the document that the town manager emailed us, it's the last version, it was the version that was given at the end of the last council. Is, what is in this document give you all the tools you need to move forward? If this was passed, as it is, as it was at the end of the last council, does this have the tools in it for you to do the marketing and selling and RFP process and everything that you need to do to move these buildings forward?
I don't have that right in front of me now, but if it was brought forward by staff and the manager, I believe it has all the tools, and, you know, as we've said a number of times, when we were talking about some of these other grants we've gone forward, each of these properties, we just want direction from the council. If, when we're talking about the former Pleasant Valley School, if we want affordable housing, if we want a public park, if we want connectivity, those are all things that we can put in any type of an RFP process.
But this was good enough?
If it was something that staff brought forward, then yes.
Right, I believe that's what it, yes, I believe it was what staff put forward, and it was just waiting for a few tweaks or something from the council. So, okay, that's what I'm just trying to say, that there's nothing wrong in here that need to be corrected. It's good to go, as you presented it, to give you the tools, you needed to do the job.
Correct.
Counsel Westerveld?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I apologize if I'm going to repeat part of what you said, however, first and foremost, the decision to delay this process was a majority decision by the town council. So that's what we decided to do, and that was based, in my opinion, on the overwhelming, the resounding discomfort that the townsfolk of Groton had with the RFP process as it was before, and with the development at the Mystic Oral School. How that process was done, how the developer was chosen, how there were inconsistencies in the way the policies or the way the RFP process was voted on, the way it was given. And the town was very upset about that, and the town asked us to take a look at it. And that's what we decided to do. We were given that direction by the town council, and so, we weren't given a timeline, we weren't said, we weren't told you got to be back in three months, we weren't told you got to be back in six months. Do your best, put together a team and look at this, and that's what we've done. And it was all based on the fact that it was a majority decision by the town council to do this. I just want to make that clear. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a point of information.
Sure.
The process, and this is to the town manager, the process that was at the last town council, we were given a process. The previous town council made numerous changes to that. It was then updated, it was ready to be voted on. It was sort of vetted, it was brought out to people, and like, I know I brought that contract out to somebody in the community, which actually was a member of MOSA, and they gave me recommendations, and I brought it and put it into that document.
Counsel Franco, what's your question?
Is that the document? I'm asking a question.
What's your question?
With those changes, is that the document they were given to start with?
Yeah, essentially, Counsel McBride asked for that, basically, is to see where we were at currently.
And that's what they were, that committee was working off of, is that correct?
I think it's better answered by Counsel McBride.
I'm not sure if the document you sent to me is the document Counsel Franco was referring to, because I wasn't on the previous council, so I...
It would be.
It was.
My feeling was you were using it as a base, but I...
Oh, yes, absolutely true.
Counsel Parker?
As this has become a little contentious, as I'm watching, I feel we should go ahead and move forward. Thank you, Mr. Bronn. Thank you, Mr. Reiner, for coming forward with your updates. I feel we should move forward and go to the next agenda item.
Thank you.
So that we can fully discuss, let me finish, fully discuss next process, so that we can clear up any issues, so we can move forward in Groton to get the developers here. Thank you.
Thank you. And we finished our two rounds of debate anyway, so thank you for that, Counsel Parker. Thank you, as always, for your presentation and update, and we look forward to hearing in the future.
Thank you.
Onto Property Reuse Committee presentation.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
My question would be, was there an updated version of this, or just the presentation of the slides, where there, was there a document to go with this?
Are you talking about our last item, or the one...
What they're bringing forward now, because I didn't see updated policy. I just wanted to ask that clarified question, or point of information I needed.
Okay, so we have, we just have their, in our packet, we just have their PowerPoint slides. Do you have that?
I have that, but my question is, was, is there a policy that goes with it?
Mayor, I think she's asking about the one that John Burt sent.
I think, I think the chair will answer.
No, the only information we have this evening to present is the PowerPoint that's in your package. Are we able to bring it up?
Yep.
Welcome, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you, Counsel. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening. So, I'll start off, I just got to get situated. Okay. So overwhelmingly, the people of the community have been asking for elected representatives for an improved method by which we deliberate and determine our decisions in regards to requests for proposals, making decisions regarding town-owned property, or deliberating on any opportunity that involves investment of municipal resources or partnership with the Town Planning and Development Department. The reoccurring theme of many sessions of citizens' petitions has been a request for a transparent, accountable, accessible, predictable process through which the town government would actively and intentionally include the public at every reasonable and allowable juncture on matters of municipal investments and expenditures, especially in regards to the town-owned or town-partner assets. It was in response to those concerns of the community that I made a referral to the Mayor Melendez, asking for the Property Reuse Committee to be formed with the charge of researching and drafting a document that would address these issues, at least as so far as the town-owned or state-owned property is concerned. I want to thank Mayor Melendez for being responsive to my referral and taking the initiative to create this committee. The mayor's tasked us with this goal, and we have conducted these committee meetings in a very open, inviting, inclusive manner. Every meeting has been held with an open invitation to the public, for public comment, public participation in the discussion, as well as other councilors or elected representatives to add a relevant, any relevant comments or concerns or suggestions. In the process of this committee's research, we collected a number of reference documents from other municipalities, both near and far, with which only further confirmed that what most of our community suspected, that our town of Groton had a process in place that was pretty clear, but wasn't as detailed as surrounding municipalities, and also with the decisions regarding town-owned and town-owned partner properties were determined. I, for one, am proud of the work thus far by the Property Reuse Committee, as well as the manner in which it has been done. I hold a deep respect for the elected representative-appointed agencies, board commission members, and citizens from the community at large who have contributed their time, energy, insights in creating the document. I believe that this process and this product stands as a strong testimony to what is possible when town government commits to a transparent, accountable, accessible, predictable work ethic. Before I hand it over to the Chair of the Property Reuse Committee, Counselor McBride, I'll take the opportunity to express my profound gratitude and respect for my fellow committee members and community members who took the process, took in this process. I also would like to express my particular gratitude and respect to Chair McBride, who managed this committee with clarity of purpose, consistency in communication, and ethic of empathy and compassion for the concerns of the community at large. Thank you, Counsel McBride, it has been a pleasure working with you on this committee, and I look forward to continuing the people's work as we move this document forward to completion.
Thank you, Counsel Portland. Thank you, councilors, for allowing us the ability to give you an update on where we stand with the Property Reuse Committee. The Property Reuse Committee consists of, if you could flip that, John, consists of eight members who represent a broad-based spectrum of the interests of the entire town of Groton. When we initially set out as three councilors and began to review the draft Property Reuse Committee, we immediately realized that this, the document, as well as other matters regarding property throughout Groton and how it's tracked, need an additional review. To ensure we had the proper expertise on the committee, we solicited other individuals with professional knowledge and expertise. with professional knowledge and experience to provide input to the committee regarding the entire process. We immediately realized we should expand the committee to include others on the committee who had property-related experience and subsequently reached out to the town manager and the mayor regarding expanding the ad hoc committee. Once granted, we immediately extended membership to various agencies which represented all of Groton. We reached out to the Conservation Commission, the Groton Housing Authority, Planning and Zoning, Wetlands, Economic Development Commission, and we also solicited residents from the community to get more involved in the process. Over time, the committee expanded and the committee currently consists of the following individuals: myself, Counsel Bordeland, Counsel Westerveld, Larry Dunn from the Conservation Commission, Bob Frank from the Groton Housing Authority, Hal Zod from the Planning and Zoning Commission, John Goodrich, a Groton resident and member of the Groton Historic Commission, Anne MOSA, and Lauren Gothier, a Groton resident, member of the RTM, and a member of the State Contracting Standards Board. As mentioned previously, the initial purpose of the committee is to review the draft RFP document and to make revisions and improvements where the committee deemed appropriate. However, the entire committee, with its vast experience, professional knowledge, and experience, realized that this committee needed to dig deeper into the property reuse situation and to do more than simply refine the RFP document to better serve the short and long-term interests of the town of Groton. The mission and purpose of this committee evolved over time throughout the entire process and the deep discussions this committee had at its bi-monthly meetings for over nine months. The main purpose of this group became the following as it evolved. Number one, to establish a procedure by which unused or underutilized town property is reviewed for future use or disposition, also known via the TOPE Committee, Town-Owned Property Evaluation Committee, which will be discussed later in the presentation. Number two is to provide the town council recommendation for the reuse or disposition via the TOPE Committee or Town-Owned Property Evaluation Committee. And the third was to establish a transparent and community-involved RFP process via the Property Reuse Committee, which has been working diligently on making these changes on the document as discussed previously. I'll turn it over to Counsel Westerveld to discuss some of the goals.
So throughout our time together, we came up early with a set of goals that we needed and also with input from all of the members that we had. Some of those goals were to conform with the current plan of conservation and development and zoning regulations. We were cognizant of this goal in conforming and we included folks from conservation and planning and zoning to help us with this task. We also needed to involve a decision-making process that is inclusive, participatory, comprehensive, consistent, predictable, transparent, accountable, and accessible to the public. I think you'll find when you look at the makeup of the Town-Owned Property Evaluation Committee, you'll see that they will help us establish or help us reach that goal. Additionally, we wanted to promote resiliency and sustainability. And resiliency and sustainability is established goal, is an established goal for the town's operating principles. Additionally, we wanted to enhance the quality of life for Groton's residences, businesses, pardon me, businesses and visitors. We also wanted to satisfy the town's needs and desires for affordable, low, and mixed-income housing. And we used help from the Groton Housing Authority to, as a representative, to help us focus on this goal. We also wanted to seek to grow the town's grand list and diversify the tax base, which I believe this will do. We also wanted to seek to divest from the real property with little to no use to the town. Thank you.
All right, moving to the next chart. The first requirement of the committee was, it's going to sound a little strange, was to validate exactly what town properties we own and what the status of those properties are. On the plus side...
Excuse me? Can you please move the microphone closer to your, to you? I can't hear.
Is that better?
Yes.
All right. On the, on the plus side, for the last year and a half, the Conservation Commission with the town staff had gone through an exhaustive review of all the town properties with a focus on the deed reviews, land use restrictions, and the result of that analysis is on this pie chart. To start off at the top, the town owns 2,492 acres comprised over 246 parcels. The way this was categorized was used and unused. And obviously, when you get to the unused as the prime discussion point. On the used side, for information, it's divided to public schools, public works, and open space. Under open space, we did have two subcategories of preserved and protected, and those definitions are provided on the next page, we'll get to in a second. Now, let's talk about the used space because that's really the focus of the TOPE. On the following chart, we have information which also includes state, city utilities, another one's for information, for a total of over 550 parcels that are being tracked. Now, I want to highlight some points on this chart. One is the unused or vacant property, really comprised of those with buildings, the schools for six... The next slide, please. You say chart, but that's it. No.
That confused me.
Two categories, with buildings and without buildings. With buildings is 76 acres, without buildings is 113 acres for 48 parcels. Now, notably, this doesn't include state-owned oral school, which has been a topic in the past. Now, when you look at it from the TOPE's responsibility, it boils down to the 54 parcels for 190 vacant acres. And just when you slice it, 87% of that land area is really over 12 parcels. So, in the county, there's a lot of small parcels that's in the list. The detail of each one of those 54 parcels is in the package at the very end for your information. So that's the facts and statistics, and now we'll move to the next chart. Next slide. The makeup of the TOPE itself, the Town-owned Property Evaluation Committee. As to ensure the inclusion of a wide range of town expertise and involvement, the Town-owned Property Evaluation Committee was made up of 12 standing members. That's three town counselors, two RTM members, one member of town staff, and one, each representative of each of, of each of the Board of Education, Planning and Zoning, Inland Wetlands, Economic Development, Conservation Commission, Groton Housing Authority, Historic District Commission, and the Parks and Recreation Commission. In addition, there would be as many as five ad hoc members specific to the property under review, which would be two RTM members from that parcel's district and three citizens from neighboring properties. Next slide. The guiding principles under which the committee would operate would be to ensure that the process would be, as has been said before, transparent, open to the public, and in fact, that the public would be not just accommodated, but actively encouraged and their input actively sought. To ensure that the involvement of all stakeholders, including but not limited to elected leaders, staff professionals, agency board and commission members, land use advocates, and citizens. To ensure that contents of the recommendations meet the needs of the decision-makers, that is, to address each goal being sought for subject properties, to thoroughly evaluate and address each recommendation and provide accurate and actionable information, to encourage, accept, and include minority reports and viable alternatives. And lastly, to provide consistent review process for each parcel that is predictable, repeatable, consistent, and inclusive of public input at every stage.
Okay, so let's sum it up. There's the Property Review Committee, the TOPE, whose purpose is to be the focal point for collecting and vetting reuse ideas for unused, unused and underutilized town property. It meets publicly as needed, but quarterly as a minimum. Properties taken under review are announced to the public through various channels and placed on a public meeting agenda. Citizens and TOPE members are given the opportunity to present their thoughts for reuse. Majority and minority reuse recommendations are made with enough detail to score them against reuse goals. That is, does the recommendation conform to the POCD and zoning? How so and in what way? How does it promote resiliency and sustainability, enhance quality of life, provide for an economic development opportunity, satisfy the need for affordable housing, and grow the grand list, for example? Once presented with this information, the town council would seek comments from the RTM, and then, by majority vote, decide on moving forward with one of the recommendations or not. The decision could be to proceed with an RFP for a project or proceed with no RFP for a project that can be accomplished entirely by town resources, or reject all recommendations and leave the property as is. Finally, it's important to recognize that this process is inclusive, consistent, open, repeatable, and designed to ensure our community's best efforts are put forth on property reuse decisions.
Just to kind of re-sum it up here, the methodology and overview. TOPE conducts a reuse evaluation review. TOPE meets quarterly to allow residents and others to review property listing and provide input. Town council or staff provide properties for review to the TOPE. Properties under review are announced to the public through multiple channels. TOPE meetings will be noticed, open to the public, and recorded as per FOI regulations in a fashion that commemorate with, with other town meetings. Two, TOPE issues recommendations to the town council. Written majority and minority reports, including pros and cons of all alternatives. RTMs asked to weigh in during joint council meetings, featuring a public presentation on the property. Subsequent joint sessions, public hearings, and decision panels prior to any decision of the reuse, and town council makes reuse decision. If you can go to the next slide. And again, just to restate, again, if you look at the graph, you have the TOPE, which is, you know, the Property Reuse Committee, made up of, you know, multiple members in our community, elected and non-elected members, also having, making sure that we have that ad hoc committee. So if it's a property that's, you know, neighboring an area, they're involved. Public input is always in there. Town council and RFP. That's kind of like a disc that's spinning. It's kind of ever-changing. Depending on where you are at any point in that RFP is where you pick back up. So it's just kind of an inclusive circle and a ring to kind of just represent the process. Thank you.
Thank you. So where we are now, let's try to sum it up here. The committee believes that the following are the critical next steps to move forward for the best interest of the town. Number one is to incorporate the town council's comments and suggestions. We hope you realize the amount of work this committee has dedicated towards the town's property reuse, and we hope you understand why and how we have incorporated some additional thoughts and efforts into the property reuse discussion. We look forward to hearing your positive and constructive comments and suggestions so we can better improve the committee's reports and efforts. Number two, continue to develop the RFP process. The Property Reuse Committee has refined the current RFP document. However, more time is needed to ensure this is in a solid form to present to you, the council. We foresee this occurring in the next two months. If anyone has any interest in reviewing where we are at or where we are in the process, this committee meets the first and third Wednesday of every month at 5:30. We hope to report back within the two months to have that finalized. Number three is to establish a town-owned property reuse committee, otherwise known as the TOPE, and implement the TOPE process, which has been presented earlier this evening. We believe this is needed, and we believe it's very important in order to begin to review all of the town-owned property so we can better determine how to move forward with these vacant properties. We are recommending that the council either formalize this committee as a formal committee appointed by the personal, personal inter-appointment committee, or form an additional ad hoc committee consisting of three counselors, which would be different than the three counselors as part of this committee, to lead this committee forward. Please note that the listed committee will become a more long-term standing committee to continue to evolve and review the properties of the town. The current Property Reuse Committee we foresee as being dissolved in the next few months once we issue you the final report. However, the TOPE Committee that we're presenting this evening is something we think shall continue. So between the two committees, we feel this will have apt, very solid council representation. We hope three additional counselors will step up and either begin to form, get involved more in the RFP process or in the TOPE Committee. I, myself, am willing to do whatever is necessary, but I would like to have some counselors get more involved in the TOPE process. Thank you for the opportunity to present the work of this committee this evening. Thank you all for the, thank you all for the committee members, truly from the bottom of my heart for your dedication and hard work on these efforts. It was a tremendous amount of work we put into it, and I hope the council can appreciate it, and we look forward to answering any questions you have. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your work, the whole committee, and your presentation. I have Counsel Parker first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question is about the TOPE Committee. Some of the people, the RFP process, are they doing this now? I'm talking about the commission groups. Because most stuff would have to go through the Planning and Zoning Commission already. So we're taking away one person to be on top of the, already on the committee, to vote on the RFP process, to come back to them to say, yes, they can be part of that process, and review their package, as well as the inland wetlands. They already have to go through them to make sure they're doing everything correctly. Conservation Committee. So that's like three to maybe possibly four of those commission members that already has to go to them to approve their process to be able to buy the property and to develop on the property. So how do you guys see that?
The TOPE Committee's objective is not to replace any of the current things that are in place. It's to form a, to develop a formal committee that can meet on a regular basis to discuss all of the town's properties, to be a place where people can come and look at the town properties, to discuss town properties, but to have the expertise on that group, meaning monthly or most likely quarterly, to discuss things. It's not to approve. It's to give recommendations to the councils to act as a sounding board so people can discuss matters in that committee.
I just also wanted to add that, again, we would just be gathering information and it would be submitting it to the council. The, one of the things overwhelmingly that I felt upon the council is we would vote on properties or, you know, development, and, you know, sometimes it would feel a little easier if we had some of the experts involved a little earlier. So this committee would be bringing a little bit of their expertise and saying, hey, do you guys know that's our this or this, that, zone that? They would be able to talk openly about that. It's not necessarily voting, but they would be bringing those expertise early, and it might facilitate the avenue in which folks then would get the dialogue to understand, hmm, I don't know if that would work, but let's send it forward, and the discussion can happen earlier. Also, sometimes a lot of planning and zoning and things happen on nights that we have council. It allows them to be part of the process a little bit earlier on and report back. So that way, we're doing things on the front end and not waiting to the back end and stalling out the development as a result of having to wait. We would have them knowing and reporting that this stuff is coming. So that's, that's the better, you know, end of the process.
I will be honest, I don't see it being a 14-member group. I don't see, foresee it being, all of these, all of, there's a lot of people. Three counselors, two RTM members, one town staff, one board of ed. member, and then not only on top of that, but you want the ad hoc. So technically, that's four RTM members. We, I can understand the citizens being involved, but not at the beginning of this process because we haven't... Have you guys written this information into the policy you're currently working on? Because you guys came up with a committee to discuss this without reviewing the policy.
This committee was a recommendation of this group to provide a recommendation to the council on an additional committee to be formed, as the council has...
I don't remember it that way. I thought we were reviewing the process to add additional information to the RFP process that we were looking at, the policy, not to add additional ad hoc groups.
That's correct. As I indicated, this committee pivoted and realized what's in the best long-term interests of Groton involving the various expertise, thought this would be the best recommendation. So that's why we're presenting this to the council.
Okay. My hope was to see a policy, not another ad hoc group.
And that is in process, as I indicated. That should be finished in the next two months. We wanted to provide an update on the council as to where we are because based upon this group's thoughts and objectives, it would be proper to start this committee sooner rather than later. So we continue to review properties on an ongoing basis.
And again, I'm going to say, not at this point. I'd rather see the policy first and then think about the ad hoc committee. Because as... Because as it is, a couple of the members, did we go out and ask other members, citizens, other citizens? I know you went out and asked for expertise, but two of the members, yes, one's already on the historic district, and the other one is a RTM member. So, right off the bat, I don't see any of the citizens on here.
We held meetings twice a month for residents to come and give feedback, and many did.
The same people?
No, different people.
From all over town?
I don't know where they lived in town, but from various areas.
Also, the meeting was open, and counselors and anybody were welcome to attend the meeting and give any comments and direction. One of the things that was really awesome about the meeting and the process is that we had public comment at every meeting, but we also let folks speak openly. We'd recognize them from the crowd, or, you know, they would even sit at the table, and we would even talk to them at the end. So it was very open, and any decisions, you know, again, the goal would be to get this committee going, so that we can start doing the town properties by forming this and then having other counselors be part of the final writing. We have a basic draft, but we have to go step by step, because it's very detailed when you look at it. If you look at other towns' processes, it's not something you can do overnight. So the more input we get, or emails from counselors, it's great to have, or come to the meetings and be part of the actual process would be helpful. Thank you.
Okay. Let me go back to, you guys were meeting bimonthly. I would think that since you guys were meeting for bimonthly every month, we've only come up with a TOPE? You've only come up with a TOPE?
No, as I indicated earlier, this was an update, and we have made many revisions to that Property Reuse Document, but it is not ready at this point. It'll be ready in two months.
But, see, that would have been nice to see at least the steps of what's happened, because I know I was waiting for the meeting minutes to be posted.
The meeting minutes have been posted.
Yes, they have, yes, because I requested them.
Counselor Parker, your time has expired. Thank you. Counselor Jacome?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of questions. So I think you indicated Chairman McBride, the TOPE committee will be a standing committee, correct?
Yes, I had discussions with John Bird about which type of committee it would be if this council wanted to, and I can't recall. I think he had said maybe it would be a personal appointments committee recommendation, if it's going to be a long-term committee, if you want to move forward with it. But at this point, ad hoc committee would work too. We just think it's important to get the committee moving.
Okay. Well, who would be the appointing authority? Was that discussed at all?
No, I would assume the mayor would make that decision.
Okay. Yeah, I think my, you know, 14 standing members and another 15 ad hoc representative members, right now, I think for me, what I'm thinking, I'm just going to tell you what I'm thinking, is too large. We already have, you know, 20-plus ABCs in the town. I was just looking at the, was looking at the 2021 Town-owned Property Reuse Process or Document, whatever that was, and they did have a Property Sale Review Committee, which I'm assuming is kind of relevant, but, you know, they had the relevant town staff, you know, two counselors, two RTM members, one member of EDC. The appointing authority was the mayor, I think in consultation with the town manager could be used, you know, just thinking of that. So that's kind of where I stand right now. I would have liked to see the document that you guys are working on as well. And Counselor Borland mentioned that she's looking at other RFP processes in the town. Could you indicate which towns you were looking at?
Do you have the, because we attached them to the, some of our notes, our minutes had, it was, yeah. So I would encourage, I mean, if you're really interested in the process to follow along, we looked at, I think, Shrewsbury, Mass. was one.
Yeah, that was a good one.
But all of our documents and the rough draft of what we started has been attached to every meeting, and any questions that you have, or if you thought it was going to be too big to start, I mean, it's great, you're more than welcome to come, and any input early on would be helpful, because, you know, we could have controlled the number or, you know, made some suggestions, but definitely, I know Shrewsbury off the top of my head, I don't have it in front of me, but it's all in all the minutes. So it's all up there to be and recorded.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Garcia?
Thank you. So I guess I just wanted to clarify, so there is a document being worked on?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a reason why it wasn't attached in here?
It's not ready for final review, as I indicated earlier.
Okay. Okay. I mean, it kind of would have been helpful for us to just see what's going on so far. Have you used the original policy as a guideline? The original drafted policy that the council came up with?
Yes, we made all the revisions to that document.
Okay. So, I mean, just to kind of echo about the TOPE committee, I mean, my biggest concern is about quorum issues. I mean, that's a big committee, and potentially, I'm just fearful that having that size of a committee is actually going to prohibit the committee from meeting sometimes because it is so large. I just want to make sure that if this is established, that, you know, it actually can meet to be productive.
Yeah, that's a fair comment, and we, you know, this was our recommendation to the council. Council could make it seven or whatever you desire, if you desire.
Okay, fair enough.
That's just what this committee wanted.
But yeah, when I see a committee that large, I'm just really concerned about quorum, because we've had issues with that in the past in other committees. So, your next steps, you were addressing the RFP process. Has any discussion occurred about the RFP process thus far?
We've been refining the document for a long time now. So you're talking about the, that's what we're going to prepare and present in two months. Is that what you're referring to?
Right. No, I watch your meetings, I just, so there has been actual discussion about the RFP process. You're just trying to...
Yes, many changes from the various municipalities we reviewed, contracting, standing board. You want to comment on some of the things you...
Yeah, I'd just like to mention that the full document, the draft policy, it's available in the agenda meetings. So, I mean, the full document that we've been putting together and reviewing, it's available in all of the agenda packages since it's been issued. So if folks want to go back to those agenda packages and take a look, it's there. Actually, I have last meeting's agenda right here, and we have a few, as Counselor Borland said, what we've been reviewing, what we've actually drafted. It's quite a substantial document. It's, and that's why it's not quite ready. I think it's, what, 20 pages? It's a very comprehensive document, and it would not go over, it wouldn't be ripe for discussion if it wasn't completely revised yet. So it's available for review. Don't think that any of this is happening, like, in secrecy, or we're not ready to release it for whatever reason. It's released. It's just an actively being worked document.
And again, it'd be great if you guys come to the meeting, and, you know, we let everyone speak, you can bring any of your concerns or changes to the document. That would actually help facilitate this to move faster. Some of the things that I was really interested in the town, I would just attend the meetings and get recognized if they had public comment. In this case, we've had public comment throughout the whole meeting. There's not a time limit. You're welcome to speak. So please, if there's any concerns over these last nine months, unfortunately, we haven't heard from anybody from the council. So I welcome your comments.
Yeah, I think the confusion is that when I have popped into the meetings to view them on YouTube, it looked like you were appearing to look at, work on a document, but it's just, we got a PowerPoint. I think that's just what the confusion is right now. And just to clarify, so one of the other next steps is that you were going to look at other municipalities. How much research has actually been done thus far on the other municipalities?
I think we had six, six different municipalities on RFP process.
Plus the town of Groton.
Yes.
Of RFPs. We went through those and identified various components of each of that, and kind of compressed it and compiled a best practices list, I guess you'd say, for what would be in an RFP, and then it blew up to 20 pages, so.
Yeah. Do you have, like, a goal for how many you're planning on looking at, or do you have a guideline for how many you're planning on looking at?
It wasn't a numbers thing. When we looked at them, there is a lot of overlap, so there's a point of diminishing returns. And it's not to say we won't look at additional ones, but it gets to be pretty standard about the content of RFP items, so we just want to make sure nothing was absent, I guess is the right word.
And overwhelmingly, in it compared to what was printed out, as I stated, I was originally part of the original, barely a paragraph, with John Burton, the former mayor, when we had nothing, and everyone was saying, why is there not a process when we turn over buildings? Something as simple as that was not there, and that's nothing, you know, that the economics, that was something that they came in on, and that got refined. And then I remember this document that was sent to us from town staff, where town counselors edited, but it never went the full process. Looking at that document in comparison to, like, Shrewsbury, Mass., which had a great standard, as well as other surrounding towns, that document was close, but didn't meet the mark in comparison to, when you look at other well-developed towns with thriving economic development. We don't want it to be so simple that it's just left to interpretation. You really want to have a process in place. I believe we also looked at New London as well. So we polled, you know, several, so that's...
Are, is the committee making sure that these are comparable towns to Groton, same kind of, yes?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor McBride, you commented that you pivoted, at some point you pivoted away from updating this to creating this. Is that...
I would say the committee evolved and realized there was some different things that needed to be discussed, and therefore, that's why we presented the TOPE to the council.
In that, in that process, I noticed that number one on here, it says, "The town manager will establish a town-owned property evaluation committee." Property evaluation committee that will meet from time to time to review town-owned properties. So in this document, it had basically what you call is the TOPE, is in this document. It's the first line, it's the first very...
Right, but it didn't include, like, citizens or RTM members or any other elected bodies or, you know, planning and zoning?
So my, so one of my questions is, did you consult with the town manager on what he was intending to do with a committee like this, or did...
We've had various discussions on this, regarding this committee. Two or three probably have updated it.
And is there a reason that you, seems like you pulled it away from the town manager to be a separate committee?
Pulled it away?
I think we were just making a recommendation. Well, it says here, "Town manager is supposed to do it," and now you, it's a different committee that's going to do this process.
No, I think we're involving the town manager. That's why he would have designated involved in this, on this property evaluation committee.
He's not in the committee?
He, there was a, I thought we had town staff.
I guess town staff.
Town staff with manager consent.
I think what's frustrating a little bit is just, it looks like the policy was just sort of put over here, and it's like the stuff after the policy was done first, and we don't have a policy yet, which you, but you say you're two months away from it, but there's just a huge amount of work done in developing the committee and goals and methodologies and things.
Well, I would say we went down two different paths at the same time. We were meeting monthly, and we decided, because we were taking on more work, that we wanted to be bi, you know, bi-monthly. So we started to go down two different paths, because we thought there was a process that should also be included in this review of properties.
And the process is the committee?
Well, two committees, the TOPE committee, and then the Property Reuse Committee. We just realized through discussions, and feel free to jump in anyone else here, that there was a need to develop this type of committee to review the town's properties, because that's currently not being done. It's being done by the town staff, but it's not being done as much as we thought it could be involving other individuals, including the town staff.
So I'll speak up for a minute, because I think part of the reason we pronged, there was a lot of discussion about the policy, the policy, the policy, and the process and the process, but there's a difference between a process and a policy. So you can have a process to decide to do an RFP, and then if you don't have an RFP policy, then what are you kicking out the door to developers? You're just saying, hey, come, come do it, and we're back to where we started, where citizens don't feel included enough, they don't feel there's enough transparency around the actual document that's getting created. And from my position on the state contracting standards board, what we see a lot of when we investigate state agencies, we investigate RFPs, and we investigate what happens not only in the creation of the RFP, in the selection of the developer, and then what actually comes out the other end. And so when I began just attending as a citizen, that struck me, like, well, what's going to happen? Like, who's creating this RFP? What happens when developers have questions? How do you determine what the council sees? So as Counselor McBride, Chairman McBride alluded to, it wasn't one or the other, it was a parallel process, so that what you are presented with in the end here is a full comprehensive way to move forward, as opposed to just getting out the gate again with a sounding board, which the TOPE is, it's a sounding board. That's your, that's your process, right, is to have that public input. And then the RFP policy, that, as I mentioned, is very well drafted, we're going through the refining phases, the policy to help guide the actual physical document that developers are going to get.
Also, the other thing to note to that, to segue off of that, is, you know, when I joined the council, there was two counselors, is that correct, was it two, John, that were appointed?
Yeah, I believe so.
By the mayor?
Yeah, it was.
That represented the whole council. That was it. At that time, it was Conrad, Heath, and Lee and Aubrey. And they went off, and I remember them going on trips to see development, and they would come back, some stuff that we couldn't know about because it was talked about in executive session, but it wasn't inclusive of the whole council. That process is very tough, because the way that I might report back, the way that Scott might report back, the way that Counselor McBride might report back, the way anybody else might report back, is very different. It wasn't inclusive to just have two appointed people that were driving it. As a counselor, the time I got the process was when it was kind of already the preferred developer. A great example, Mystic Oral School, the Groton Housing Authority. I didn't even know they were really a selection until way further on, but I never understood why they weren't. The scoring, how'd they score it? How come I didn't get to score it? I have to pick it, but I didn't get to be part of the scoring. So this just kind of like trickled into making sure, if we're going to vote on something, that we have some, you know, know of this early on, and having a committee like this, you have three counselors going, and you have RTM, you have public, yeah, do I agree that maybe we could slim down the number? Absolutely. But this is a committee that's going to be inclusive, where if I wanted to purchase a sliver of land, like people were doing off of the No-Aid Community Garden property, they could come here, it could be discussed, if they, you know, people have an open forum to discuss what's going on. When things were happening by the Mystic Oral School, neighbors felt like they weren't part of the process. When, the ad hoc group would only come in when a property in that area is in question. So those people, you know, that group would be all the time. But there are things in the original document, which, when we go back to the original document from a year and a half, two years ago, there wasn't much of anything. The push was recently to do something, and I can appreciate that. There's some good things in there, but this just has a nice process of people who are keeping a finger on the pulse of the lands and involving our zoning, our wetlands, and all the people that are in there to help guide us to understand, when I ask questions like, what is our this, what is, we need a process. So those are the things that we heard from the community. What the community wanted was a process in which it was inclusive.
You've come in, this has gone from three pages to 20 pages, so I'm a little concerned that there's a 20-page or more document that just becomes so unwieldy that no one knows what to do with it. Can you just, I know we haven't seen it yet, can you give me a highlight of something in that document?
Twenty pages is condensed. We took, obviously, when you're working on anything and you find the other towns' information, you'll take all the familiar ones, you'll weed out, you'll bring in all the ideas, and then we're reading through it, and then you start to delete. It's like a rough draft. So you're bringing in all the different areas and things that, where you see, you know, towns that are running in a way that have a very transparent process. So this is just, it's like you're pulling a bunch in, and then we have to go through and start pulling out which ones. So where it will end, we can, I encourage you, Counselor Jones, to come out and help us weed that down. We would love to have your input. Those 20 pages is just right now a holding of data and information, but I'll let you speak to it as well. But please come out and help us, and I encourage all of you guys to come out and be a part of the process.
I mean, I'm sure I was being hyperbolic when I said 20 pages. And I think when we talk of policy, you really do, you want to be specific, right? Vagueness is not, not something that helps in the endgame when there's questions about legality of contracts, legality of RFP processes. So what, you know, a lot of different folks on the committee presented drafts. I presented a draft based on my experience, and largely taken from state guidance, actually, on how to develop an RFP. And I'll run through the headers. I mean, it goes through the purpose of it, it goes through ethical conduct of individuals involved, it talks about communications between members on the selection process, as well as individual, like, developer to selection committee members. So it covers a wide variety of things, and I think that that's a benefit to the town, because now we don't have a question, and we're not scratching our heads when something happens, like, oh, so-and-so gave, you know, someone a call and asked them this question, but now this developer over here doesn't have the same... but now this developer over here doesn't have the same information. So it's one of the things we run into, right? Is developers who are bidding on a process, they have different sets of information, which influences their proposals and may influence their selection. And whenever you do an RFP process, you want to keep it completely even playing field as much as possible. So what this policy does is it gives developers, they know what the game rules are. The people involved in the selection process know what the game rules are. Citizens looking out in know what the game rules are. And it keeps everybody on the same level playing field. No one's running around trying to get attorney opinions, like in a moment, trying to figure things out. Like this is, this answers a lot of questions before they come up. And it sets a very clear expectation for how everyone involved in the process, start to end, should behave, what their rights are, what their responsibilities are. And I think it really protects the town in a way that a three-page document just wouldn't.
Matt? A prime example of what Lauren's talking about is the change to the committees, or the change to the interview process from the Mystic Oral School. They had one group of people who were interviewing. They went to do another interview. Suddenly, the panel changed, so the questions changed, and the scoring was different. That would not have been a fair process, at least not in, not in the industry that I'm in. You can't do that. And that was an improper process. This will prevent that from happening.
Also, when looking back at this original, well, not, this was in the original document. When I came on, the original document, I said it was barely a page. When you say things on here like, "The town manager will establish a town-owned property evaluation committee." You need more detail than that. In five years, someone that's never watched any of these meetings, that now is like, you know, wanting to be on the council, that's like 25 and says, "I want to be elected." They're not, they don't understand. It says, "Property evaluation committee will meet." Okay, like who should be involved in that? Like do we, does he get direction from the council? Does he get, you know, you need some detail. It's great, and I think that's wonderful. So when you have a committee, also you want to have a committee because we're elected every two years. And I will say, it is, I mean, having the update we had today on the properties, it is hard to keep your fingers on the pulse of this. Having this all wrapped into one area that's constantly meeting is a nice place. And we're not talking about a lot of property here, but we are talking about a process where you need a place where, you know, like there's things, I, I remember when I called John and I said, "Hey, someone said we own the, the sliver of land over in Old Mystic." And he's like, "Let me check into that. I don't know if that's our green or not." There was someone had contacted about mowing. They've been mowing it. John's like, "Ah, jeez, it is our property." Well, this document, if you go into the end of this, where I, I want to thank Larry, Larry for doing, goes into all those different properties, what they are, where they're located. We need to have a process and a place that not only town staff can view, but elected officials and citizens have a place that's, it's all kept in one. So this is a great start, but there's not enough detail.
Counselor McBride, how confident are you in the two-month timeframe? That you can have this done?
Confident.
And I think with your guys' help, we could be done faster because then we could, we could weed out any questions you guys might have and add things in real time. One of the things we're doing is typing live. So if you guys have things you want to add, come out and we add them right in. No, no, no decision is a wrong decision. So having you guys be a part of it early will also speed the process up.
Oh, we caution you, we're extremely busy over the next month.
Yeah.
We do have budget.
But early on would be helpful.
Counselor Franco?
Thanks. So I can, I sort of agree with Counselor Parker that I'm sort of dismayed a little bit that you took up creating a committee and designing it as well as even going through the whole town property listings. And from how I remember this, it was basically to take the document that we had, give it to you, ask for some changes, recommendations of what we should do to it, and it should have been returned back. And that's where I, as a councillor, thought I was voting on. And I would like to notate that as of two weeks ago, I did go on the town website and looked for the minutes, and there were none for 2023, none. So I did look for the minutes. And I had, I, I feel like I've been waiting, and then when I got the agenda packet and I saw it was this PowerPoint presentation, and it wasn't actually a document, I was quite disappointed because we had been waiting for this, and it was kept getting moved up on our agenda because there were things that had to be updated or changed or whatever. And come to find out, basically, it's been a PowerPoint presentation and wasn't actually the document that was being mostly worked on, that I had noticed. So I think it'll take much longer than two months because I think you'll come back in two months. We will get the document. We'll review it. Then we'll send it back to committee with all the changes that we have in, that we would, that's how some of the times this works. And this will be a quite a long process. There is, I think sometimes if you get too specific in a process, I also think one can get stuck. I understand having details and a good layout, but I also think that some things should be flexible and with capabilities of being changed. I, I looked at some of your goals, and, I mean, from the goals that we gave you was basically, "Review this document, please make changes, and return it to us." And you're bringing in resiliency and sustainability and satisfying the town's need for desirable and affordable low and mixed income housing, which I can understand, but that's the council's, and, and a committee's idea on what they should be doing with that. I don't know if it should be put in here as you're supposed to be reviewing the document on a process, not putting that in there because on any property, including Lake Rotten Heights, we have manufacturing. Not everything's going to, maybe housing. Seek to grow the town's grand list. I would like to continue.
Let me see if I've got any more speakers. Okay, I got none more. So it'll take second time. Counselor Franco?
Thank you. Seek to grow the town's grand list and diversify the tax base. I don't think that should be a goal because, I mean, it's, it's a possibility, but there's also potential for having a park. So I don't think that's a goal. Seek to divest from the real property with little to no use to the town. I don't exactly understand what that, that, what you're trying to say there. And then I also think this committee that you've created, I think it has, it's, it's, I personally think it's too large. I think there would be conflict of interest if you have a committee that's coming together to try and give recommendations on what we should do to town property, but then they're going to be voting on it in wetlands and at planning and zoning. So I think there are some of these that don't make sense to me. I don't think the Historic District Commission should be on there as, I don't know if it's not a Historic District Commission, what input that needs to be. I don't, I, I think it should be much smaller than this. I liked what was also considered in the, notated in here for the, there was another property group here, the Property Sale Review Committee, the way that was made up. I also agree that that would be just very simple and to keep it the same. And I think honestly that I personally think that nine months has been a long time. I think it's a very long time when there was a document that was already set and we were just asking you to please review it. And I think this is probably going to go on for probably another, another nine months the way we're looking right now, and I'm not really up for that to be happening. So I personally would rather have the original document come back to us as a council. We review it, and we make the changes that we would like to see. And then just, please, let's just move on with this. Thank you.
One second. Commissioner Goodrich, you have the floor?
I just wanted to kind of answer Counselor Franco's question about Historic District. You know, parts of the community can be added if they're deemed to be historically significant. You know, as we found out at Oral School, as the state archaeologist is going to get involved, it does have some significant Native American connections to it, which should be protected. And when the State Historic Preservation Office did some HDC training the other day, there is grant money for properties to be redeveloped that the town could use if they are deemed to be historic. So I, I do understand her point of maybe if it's not in the Historic District, wondering why we're there, but I would like there to be an open mind to that and see how that particular commission could benefit this process. Thank you.
I just wanted to say, it was brought up about the sustainability. We voted on as a council to make sure that we were seeking to look in the sustainable, you know, way. So we just added that on there because that's a goal that we had stated as a council. Also, we had that study from 2021 that talked about the affordability study and housing and all of that. So that's just, it doesn't mean it's going to be with every plan, but you seek to, to, you know, think of that. It's, it's not like a hard stop. It's, it's, it's a, it's a way of life. It's a, it's a thought. And again, yes, it takes nine months. You know, we've had some things that we were doing. And again, I just encourage all councillors, if you thought that the original document was the best document, it would have been nice to hear that six months ago. We could have slowed down the process and saved a lot of time, but we didn't hear anything. And so here we are. Those comments would have been great to have at the meeting. And being part of the process, we could have worked through this as, as a, I mean, people can show up. So it is hard to hear as, as a group that has spent the time on this, to hear that, that they feel that we, you know, didn't do what was expected, but that was never emailed or communicated in any fashion. Or any recommendations sent forward.
Well, in response to that, we have, I, the council has been waiting for, on our agenda for three months.
Point of order, I'm still speaking. Thank you. May I have the floor? Thank you. So that would be very helpful if the information was sent forward. So it is a two-way street of communication. If you thought that we were getting off track at any point, it would have been great to know earlier on in, in the process. Also, you know, this document, again, that we currently have that is only still very new in its creation, is, it has some good points that are added in here that will be in the RFP process and, and, but we put more detail because it was still kind of vague. Thank you.
I have a point of information.
What's your point of information?
Are we going to allow councillors, because they're sitting down at that table, to have unlimited time and us up here have time?
Yes. Yeah, because they're, they're the presenters.
Excuse me? Decorum?
Okay, hold on a second. Hold on.
Decorum?
If decorum is not held.
Decorum again?
This is, this is both ways. This is both ways. So if decorum is not held here, we're just going to be adjourned. So if you want to continue discussing this, let's be respectful.
Thank you.
Counselor Parker?
Thank you. I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, I heard something about a working document. Are you guys using Google? I didn't think we should be using that as part of our process.
No. So what's happened the past few meetings when we've had this draft policy as part of our agenda is, the few times we've spoken about it, we edit it in Word. It's right up there on the screen, the Zoom screen, so it's being entered into the record. And then any subsequent edits are added to the agenda for the following meeting. It's all being documented. It's all at the liable.
That's, that was my question because I want to make sure we're doing, following the process and we don't get in trouble.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, Counselor Parker. Absolutely, yes. Everything is, is done up on the screen so that everyone can follow along. And that's both for the record, for folks like myself who watch a lot of these meetings after the fact, and those in, in the meetings so we can actually get more done in the time that we have allotted.
Okay. So if possible, I would really like to see the draft. I don't, I, I personally like to see what's going on. I got, I can see the meetings, but like I said, the minutes don't, don't give off a lot of information. So we just got the minutes. So they were just posted within the last two weeks. So I would rather see the working documents if you guys are working on it. That way, we all could have been looking at the same thing and been providing input. Same token, some of us cannot attend because we also do work during the day and sometimes don't get off till late at night. So, or we're juggling between two meetings. So.
The working document?
We do the best we can. We do the best we can. Please let me finish. Do the best we can. But I, like I said, I really was expecting at least the rough draft. So if we can have that, no later by Friday, maybe, that way we all can see what you're doing and provide input. The second question is, I believe we heard that we looked at other municipalities, but not within the Connecticut, correct?
No, we've looked at some Connecticut. And just for clarification, the working, working document has been posted with the agendas for every meeting. So we, we can resend it, but it has been posted with the agendas for you to review if you desire.
Right, Manager Burt, they're in the agenda packages, posted online?
They are, and I also just sent it, the latest I have from 3:15 to the council. Now, you may have made some tweaks since then, so if you have something new or if you want to give to me, I'll distribute.
3:28 should be the, oh, sorry, today's 3:28.
Yeah. The latest I have is 3:15.
3:15 is the last time. Yep.
Okay, so, no. All right, thank you. But I believe somebody's mentioned Massachusetts. So are we comparable to that? I know that question was already asked, but I did not get a clear answer. So why are we looking at Massachusetts? Is it the same setup as our military, our, how we do things here in Groton? Is it the same municipality setup? Because that would be better to look at the same setups. If it has a RTM, if it has a town council.
Yeah, if I, I, I don't think that has anything to do with demographics so much. The, the Shrewsbury, Mass. one was, they had a Beale School, sort of like our Fitch Middle School, that was being re, up for redevelopment or whatever. And it was in the middle of town. And the process they used, I thought, was a gold standard for community involvement and getting things moving along at a, at a reasonable pace, again, with community involvement. So I, I don't think it matters if we have Navy or we don't have Navy.
It does matter because our demographics are different. So our output would be different. That's, I understand where you were coming from, from that perspective, but if we're going to do something comparable, it really needs to reflect as much similarities as it should, as it can.
As, as a military, you know, family here in Groton and a local, you know, the development of what we do, yes, it's great. We have a military branch here. If we were following a different standard and we looked at other military municipalities around, we definitely are not meeting that standard in comparison. So we were just looking at a document in a way of, you know, getting ideas, not, that process doesn't really change when you're going out to RFP if you're a military town or not. So I can appreciate the respect of the military, but it's, but, you know, and again, the, the minutes in the draft have been up for every meeting. We have no control as a committee about putting them up. The town has put them up, and they are review, reviewable. And if you're not able to attend the meeting, you are able to send it by email, any of your concerns. Thank you.
Do I still have time or?
Yes, you have 30 seconds.
Okay. I just request that if we're going to do this, we all, we're all trying to get to this together. But again, I see where the process is going for a TOPE, but I'm not comfortable right now on voting on a TOPE. Thank you.
Just a point of information, it was just a presentation tonight. There was no vote. That's all we're doing.
Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, in, as you are developing the process, have you consulted with the, our planning department?
We've sent copies to John Burt throughout the process. I, I did, I do remember receiving comments from you.
Yeah, and I shared with the planning department a couple of times.
Yeah, they did provide comments back. I forget.
They've come, they've come back. I mean, just because they're the ones that are going to have to work with it. So it just seems like they should be having some say in what the document is that they're going to have to work with.
Yep, absolutely.
And they're also invited to welcome, we've, you know, everyone is welcome to come to the meeting.
So they've been, have they been commenting all along or have they been?
I would say the last comment was probably two months ago, maybe?
Probably in depth.
Yeah.
And that's when sort of it first largely came together.
I think our process is going to be when we get to something that we agree on, because we haven't quite got there yet, then before you, before it comes back,
we haven't quite got there yet, then before you, before it comes back, before the full town council, the staff would have a final review and that would, you know, we'd have the data. But, so I think there's a little, there's a timing issue. So I'm not sure that until we get our agreement that, you know, we don't want to have too much staff involvement because we're still chewing through it.
Also, it was stated that there's a delay in the process and the next step recommendation, no matter if we go with this document or add part of this slideshow or add pieces, we should establish a committee to work to get this going. And that committee would have a process, basically a guiding principle, and we can start moving with properties. That's, that's what the next step recommendations are, if I'm understanding. Is that correct, Counsel McBride?
Yes, that's one of those.
It was to move forward. So today, we could say, yes, we're going to move forward, we're going to establish a committee. I encourage, we haven't heard from any of you guys yet, so I encourage to hear from you and be a part of that process, and let's move this down the line. Let's get the town staff, let's get properties going, let's, let's move it on down. And let it be, we go with this one or this one or what we do, let's come together as a council and work on the document and a process that feels inclusive, but we've had no input. So we're working off of just what we've gotten from each other in the community, but not from everybody else.
Are we able to ask Mr. Reiner if he has any thoughts on what he's seeing as the document? Is that?
I think it's been a while since he's reviewed it.
I mean, that's just, to me, that's a little bit of a concern that the people who are going to have to work with this on a daily basis.
And I did read it not long ago. I think it's got a good framework to it, you know. There's going to be a budget needed to go along with this for surveys, title searches and other things. So there's going to be some tweaking needed, but I think generally it's a good framework.
And in no way is this a perfect document. In no way did I think that every counselor up here was going to agree to any, every piece of it. That's why we're looking for your involvement in the process. So this is just a kind of a shot, you know, to get input. So, you know, the, the more that we can get involvement and feedback and emails and communication and involvement, we can start moving this a little bit faster because we can start eliminating things that we are starting to find consensus on earlier on. So I would love to, I mean, we, I had hoped we would have a more turnout and, so we wouldn't be sitting here now. And through John, I know Counsel McBride has been doing a wonderful job communicating with him. He's been the point on that. And, you know, town staff are always open, the door is always open to everybody to come. And it's been a very wonderful meeting, and everyone's welcome to bring their inputs, comments, emails, whatever, and we'll include them. We bring them up. Anybody that writes things or calls, we add. So please, if there's pieces of this you'd like to see, come on down. Let's move this along, let's get this established committee, and let's implement it and, and start gathering. And if you want, if you want the new chair of the, you know, personnel appointments to have this to be his first item, you know, let's move it along, get people appointed, get it on it.
I mean, I guess my concern where you are at this stage, so you're in the past halfway through this stage of writing this policy, that the people who are going to use this aren't sitting at the table with you and saying, I mean, I'm not an expert in planning or built, selling buildings, there's nobody up here that's an expert in planning. So we can give our view about something, but we're not professionals that do this for a living, having, there's two of them sitting right back there.
Just like the Clawchester thing, we people said with the survey, we couldn't make them fill it out. We invited everybody. So we need people to come. John, is there a reason why they're not attending?
No, our intention would be to include them prior to you receiving.
Right.
We just, like I said, we're just not at that point. But our plan was to, again, try to get to you by two months and don't expect it to be approved on passage, but expect it to get to you by two months, and that would be after the administration's review and comments.
Just a point of information there. Sure. Is there any voting action coming out of this right now that you would like?
Uh, no, there's not any plan. I mean, theoretically, someone could make a motion to set up the committee, but I don't see the support for that right now. But there's no required action though.
Just wanted to make sure.
Just a question for clarification. I heard that, it sounded like I heard that we may have missed a benchmark at some point or you guys have been waiting, somebody has said this was going to be on the agenda or this was part of our agenda. Is that what I understood? Because we haven't missed any benchmarks, we haven't been given any timeline, we haven't been given any benchmarks. So we're doing the best we can. We're asking for two more months so that we can finish at least the rough draft to get to you, which I think is a reasonable expectation because it does have to be a firm document. Even the draft's going to go to you, but it's got to be something that's not going to be able to be challenged when we get into the RFP process.
I'd like to respond to that because those were my comments.
No. Counsel Garcia, you have the floor?
Thank you. Just a couple more policy, or, yeah, policy questions. Are you, did you start with the draft document and then revise, or did you start from scratch?
We started with the draft document that was provided from Town Manager Burt.
Okay, so you're actively revising it as you're going through it?
Yes.
And did every member of your committee receive the original draft document?
I believe so.
I think it went in an agenda pack, if I remember.
Yeah, I think so.
You've sent that out for comments to get back to you for our next meeting.
Yeah, no, she's referring to the one from nine months.
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
If I remember correctly, I believe it was in an agenda pack after you requested.
Actually, you are correct. It was, yeah, because we always, always had that in there. Well, I sent that to Lisa, it was always part of the agenda. So they did all receive it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. First of all, thank you, thank you, thank you. I know you guys put a lot of work in this because I see how long your meetings are on YouTube. I don't, I'll admit, I haven't watched them all, but I have kept up with, with what you're doing as best I could. I have a request from this council because I've heard a lot of concern about how long the process is taking. And from what I'm seeing tonight, they're going to come to us with a finished document, and we're basically going to be a step one because it doesn't look like there's any consensus here. So my request from this council is to send in your feedback to this committee in the next two months. They, they're going to be finished in two months. Please send in your feedback in the next two months. If, if you value the, the opinion, the counsel of the planning department, I suggest you ask them their opinion on it, take what you want and send it to them.
I'd like to make a referral.
One second. My request to the committee in front of us today, please seriously consider adopting whatever you see from the council that has a lot of support. Because at the end of the day, it has to get support from this council. I think you guys have done a lot of good work. I think your document's good. I think the document that we had in the beginning was good. I can support a lot of this. But what I'm concerned with is there's a lot of, the market's hot, and we need to sell these properties now, that's what we're hearing. And I just don't want in two months for you guys to bring us a document and it's basically like we're from square one and, and it didn't mean anything. So please, counselors here, send in your feedback. Please, committee, seriously consider adopting that feedback into your, into your, into your document so that it has at least a chance of passing for the committee, the TOPE committee. I think it's, I actually think it's a really good idea. One question, are you, is it, once you send this document to us, this committee will dissolve and then it's your wish that the next one will be created?
I mean, we were looking from, I don't want to speak.
Yeah, let me speak.
Yeah, go.
Our thought was that the property reviews committee will continue to be in existence until the council has approved that document.
Okay.
This would be a separate committee with three other counselors that you would select to move that TOPE committee along.
Okay, very good. Thank you. I think it's a good idea. It's obviously going to have to have support from this council as well, so please send your feedback on that council as well. Maybe if you think it's too big, give them suggestions for what they can do to make that smaller and more palatable for yourself. I will say, I think it's very creative to have project-specific ad hoc committee members. I think that's a very creative idea. I think it's very valuable. It might be difficult to, to seat a couple people if a project might not be that big, but I definitely think it's, it's a great idea. Thank you for your work. Again, please, council, send in your feedback, please. I, I just really don't want to be in two months back at square one, sending it back to you and now you have to meet every other month for nine more months because it's, it's just not, that's not what anybody here wants. I think we can, if we can agree on one thing, is we don't want that to happen. So please, let's work together and let's get this done. I have everyone speaking twice. Counsel Jacome spoke once, so if you'd like to end, if you have anything to close with, that's fine, but if not, then this, this will be over.
Thank you, Mayor. No, I'll just end by saying, I think, like we said, I think that whether or not we decide if you want to move forward or not with a TOPE, there's a consensus there. Maybe, I think we've heard from a lot of counselors, it's, right now it's big, so maybe we could, like you said, shrink it down. But you have, you know, still have those key stakeholders. I think there is a consensus as well, and it's just me saying it, that, didn't want to look at the document too. So, you know, I'll be looking and attending, hopefully attending the meetings if I can and putting the word in where I can. So, thank you.
I'm going to make a referral on this matter, and if you take it now or under other business, it's up to you.
Point of order.
I could take it now. What's that?
I believe our process means, I believe our process for referrals has to go through an email to you and the town manager, you have to, she has to, whoever makes the referral has to have additional council support. So unless we're going to send an email right now and get the additional support, I don't think that that motion or that that referral is proper.
Well, that is true, but you, a counselor can state their referral in the meeting whenever they wish. It's just in order for it to actually get on the agenda, they'd have to go through that process. So she can or state her referral right now.
I'm going to make a referral that this committee sends us their document that they have worked on so far and that this committee takes it up as business and we, we work on it and we also bring in planning and zoning because it's, it's going to be too hard to do what you're asking us to do. Because I cannot go and talk to Paige and each one of us individually and then go and talk to John each individually and then put my stuff together after we get the document and then go back to them.
Okay, I have your referral.
Thank you.
Point of information. I just wanted to thank you, Mayor Melendez, for your comments and positivity on it. And, you know, it, as a person who's been on here, it is exciting to get the information from you guys, but I will state for myself, I can't speak for other committee members, it's putting a lot of pressure at the last four, you know, four meetings, we had nine months, and so it would have been really helpful to have this early on. Opposition, direction, something.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
Point of information, point of information. For your referral, Counsel Franco, are you asking for planning and zoning or planning and development, the staff?
Planning and development staff.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to clarify.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn second.
Okay. Motion to adjourn by Jacome, seconded by Franco. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposers, extensions, we're adjourned unanimously at 10:52.